Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Mordian Morse Premium, Antay Calorado. The acronym is AMPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Consul Court. Today is Class 168. Class 168. What do we learn in Class 167? Well, we're really starting to learn about supremacy clause, right? We're learning about the supreme law of the land. Well, how can you enforce supreme law without sovereignty? And without sovereignty, you can't enforce jurisdiction. Therefore, in Class 167, we start talking about what? Sovereignty and jurisdiction. We also talked about the enforcement of Moroccan law. Right? We learned a lot more about what the International Court of Justice said to the United States regarding the enforcement of Moroccan law, right? But what do we really take away from Class 167? Well, the reality is this. You cannot enforce Moroccan law or Moroccan treaties unless you yourself are Moroccan. Now, I'm talking to the copper-colored people right now. Who are the copper-colored people? People call themselves Negroes, Blacks, Colors, African-Americans, Moorish-Americans, people call themselves melanated Indians, Hebrew Israelites, you name it. You cannot enforce Moroccan law unless you're Moroccan. However, can Americans enforce Moroccan law? Yes. But who is the only people or country that Americans can enforce Moroccan law on? Well, they can only enforce it on a Moroccan country and Moroccan people. So, Moroccans can bring suits against Americans, and Americans can bring suits against Moroccans. But when the Americans bring a suit against Moroccans, what type of laws are the Americans enforcing on the Moroccans? They're enforcing Moroccan law. Because the treaty is a what? Moroccan-American treaty between two countries. So, when the Empire Morocco ratifies a treaty, it's Moroccan law. When the United States of America ratifies the same treaty, it becomes what? American law. But when you pick up the treaty, it says Moroccan hyphen American. So, it's a Moroccan-American treaty when you're talking about a bilateral treaty of peace and friendship. So, Moroccans can enforce Moroccan law against Americans, and Americans enforce the treaty language of a Moroccan treaty against Moroccans as well. But what has a superior position in the treaty regarding nationality? It is Moroccan. Why? Because the treaty is signed with the Moroccan government. It is the Moroccan government's job to be superior in the contract because the Moroccan government is enforcing Moroccan law through its Moroccan Cultural Court. Therefore, Moroccan law reigns supreme even through a treaty that happens to be a bilateral treaty or a multilateral treaty. Moroccan law reigns supreme for the Moroccans to enforce it on all the parties' signatory powers or signatory parties to the treaty. So, in Class 167, we were starting to learn that it's about sovereignty and jurisdiction. What does sovereignty mean? That's the state, i.e. the country. The country is the state, and the state is the country. But what type of state? The external state, which is the mother state. All states within it have what? Other states. As an example, Alabama is an internal state of the United States of America, but the United States of America is the external state over Alabama. The Empire Morocco is the same way. The Empire Morocco is in itself a country commonly known as a state. But what type of state is it? External state, and it has internal Moroccan states within it. But when there's a dispute between what? Moroccan states and American states, what do you do? You put down your constitutions and you pick up the treaties based upon the particular subject matter. Because most treaties within the provisions of the treaty would talk about that particular subject matter. It's either expressed or implied in the treaty already, it's settled. So, what we learn in Class 167 is the fact that the Moors have to pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco to be recognized as Moroccans again in order to be enforced with what they commonly call is their rights. Today, we will learn about how to enforce your rights. Today, we'll continue to talk about the supremacy clause because treaties is a conversation about supremacy clauses. Constitutions are about supremacy clauses. International law is about supremacy clauses. The Consul Court is also about supremacy clause. Because the Consul Court gets to enforce the supremacy language of all these instruments coming on as treaties, international law, and Moroccan law. That's just how powerful Consul Court is. The Moorish Consul Court is so powerful. It is what's commonly known as the Ipsso-Jour compulsory neutral court that gets to settle the dispute between the Empire Morocco and the United States of America. Consul Court is very powerful, has a lot of authority. So, we'll continue to learn about that, right? Because in the International Court of Justice, what did the ICJ tell the United States of America? Say, if you have any disputes with the Moors, you have to take it to Consul Court. And by that way, and that way only, can Moroccan law be enforceable against the United States of America and its nationals and officials as long as the Consul Court jurisdiction is being what? Exercised. But what type of jurisdiction? Extended jurisdiction. What does extended mean? That the Empire Morocco, when it's Consul Court and Moroccan laws, has extra territorial jurisdiction. It means that Moroccan law can do what? It can pierce the qualified immunities of any country that's a part into our treaties. It means that Moroccan law and the Consul Court can pierce the qualified immunities of any American official. Any American official. Whether it's from the federal government, the several union states, or their local municipalities, Moroccan law and Consul Court can compel any American, no matter what office they sit in, to come to Consul Court if, in fact, there's a complaint against them. That's just how powerful Moroccan law is, and this is why they never wanted Negroes, Blacks, and Colors to know that they are actually Moroccans. This is why they did not want Dred Scott of the year 1856, Dred Scott versus Sanford case. They did not want Dred Scott to know that he was a Moor. Keep in mind, Moors are what? Short title for what? Moroccan. So, it's Moor-rockin'. They didn't want Dred Scott to know. And even in the 21st century, in the year 2025, the United States of America still wants everyone to have the same mentality of Dred Scott. Dred Scott suffered from identity crisis. He didn't know who he was. Therefore, he was begging for American recognition to be American citizen. And the Moors of the 21st century are still holding on to the premise that they're Americans. And the reality is, you're Moroccans, but you've been adopted to be Americans. We'll talk about that today. Today, I'll show you an example of naturalization of what the United States of America did to the Mexicans. In 1848, in a treaty of 1848, we're talking about it today, Hidalgo Guadalupe of 1848. I'll show you that Mexicans were naturalized, and within one year, they became Americans. I'll show you how powerful treaties actually are. I'll show you how powerful a pen is when it's in the hands of the elected or appointed officials of a government. There's nothing on planet Earth more powerful than a pen in the hands of government officials. Nothing. You want to talk about a nuclear weapon? You're looking at it. A nuclear weapon is a pen. It can change everything in a matter of seconds. A nuclear weapon takes time to get to its final destination, but a pen can be signed on a document in a matter of seconds and change your life. We'll talk about how powerful treaties are today. Because Moors have a lot of misconceptions. They think they can enforce treaties on their own, and they cannot. Only the common authority, meaning the duly authorized, appointed, or elected officials of a country can enforce the language of a treaty. Treaties are non-self-executing. Meaning, the average national citizen cannot enforce treaties by themselves. You have to contact your government and have your government come in and represent you. For example, Brittany Griner. You think Brittany Griner was in Russia trying to enforce Russian laws against Russia? No. Brittany Griner had the entire country, commonly known as the United States of America, coming in to represent her as what? A naturalized American. Brittany Griner wasn't writing her own written affidavits. Brittany Griner wasn't trying to enforce some treaty or arrangement that Russia and the United States might have signed between the two of them. Brittany Griner wasn't trying to enforce that. Why? Because she's not the common authority. Meaning, she's not the duly elected or appointed ambassador, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Consul General, et cetera. She has no right to try to enforce the provisions, i.e. the articles of a treaty or any arrangement between two countries. She couldn't do it. So, her country had to come in and represent her. And then she was what? Released on a prisoner swap. Therefore, negotiations took place on the highest level of two countries negotiating. Two countries. The United States of America and what? The Russian Federation. It wasn't Brittany Griner down here negotiating with Russia up here. She's down here, and here's Russia. And she's in the jurisdiction of Russia. You think she was trying to negotiate with the Russians while she was in prison? No, it had to be the United States of America and its officials negotiating directly with Russia. It's a country-on-country dispute regarding what? A national. The Moors were absolutely lied to by their teachers when their teachers told them they can enforce treaties. Even hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray when you're allowed anybody on planet Earth to tell you the average citizen or national can enforce a treaty by themselves. You were deceived. Only a country and its officials can enforce treaties. Let's get into the class. All right. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount, right? So, what do we have up here? It's Constitution for the Empire Morocco, that is the country. It's not a corporation. It's not a privatized charter. It's not a church. It's the country. Whose country? The Moors' country. The Moors' country. M-O-R, the Moor. You can't spell Morocco without M-O-R. You can't spell Moroccan without the M-O-R. You can't spell Moor without the M-O-R. And you can't spell Moorish without the M-O-R. And see, this is where Moorish-Americans get it all wrong. When you say you're Moorish, you're taking things out of sequential order. How can you say you're Moorish when the word Moorish is the fourth? The fourth word is sequential order. You know if the first word is sequential order? It's what? Morocco. That's the first word because that's the country. The country gives you your nationality. So, it's Morocco, then it's the nationality. What's the nationality? Moroccan. So, it's Morocco, then Moroccan. What's the short title for Moroccan? Moor. What's next? Moorish. Because the word Moor itself is a noun. So, there's Moorish. But you can't be Moorish unless you're a Moor. And you can't be a Moor unless you're Moroccan. And you can't be Moroccan unless the Empire of Morocco recognizes you as Moroccan. To the Moors that run around calling themselves Moorish. But you forgot to check the first three boxes. So, now the word Moorish, based on the definition, is what? What's the eight parts of speech of Moorish? Adjective. So, Moorish-Americans keep running around telling Black people, you know Blacks is an adjective. You know what I want Black people to start telling Moorish-Americans? Tell them, did you know Moorish is an adjective? What you got to say about that, Moorish-American? Moorish is an adjective, just like Black. It's a description. Black America, I want you to ask these Moorish-Americans, are you Moroccan? How the heck are you Moorish if you ain't Moroccan? Because it's what? Morocco first. Morocco, Moroccan, Moor, Moorish, in that order. If you just simply say you're Moorish, I got no problem with that. Just understand it's an adjective. An adjective does what? It describes what? The noun. What's the noun? Moor. But the word Moor is affiliated to what? Moroccan. I'm taking my time here to explain this. But you can't be Moroccan unless you're from the country of what? Morocco. So, have you pledged your allegiance to the Empire Morocco? If the answer is no, then you are not Moroccan, which means if you ain't Moroccan, you ain't a Moor. And if you ain't a Moor, then you ain't Moorish unless Moorish is just simply a standalone adjective. Guess what else is a standalone adjective? Black. Is a generic word. It just symbolizes an ethnicity or culture, but it does not tell you the nationality. And when you say you're Moorish, that means that you're conscious enough to know you're a Moor. And if you're conscious enough to know you're a Moor, then why aren't you conscious enough to know that the word Moor is a short title for Moroccan? And if you knew that Moor was a short title for Moroccan, then why haven't you pledged your allegiance to the Empire Morocco, the country itself? I'm being redundant for a reason. Let me ask you a question. People run around and say they are sheik. Matter of fact, when they say they're grand sheik. Matter of fact, they say they're national grand sheik. Have you ever heard of a sheik being American? No. There's no American sheiks. It's made up. Show me anywhere where it says sheiks are American. It doesn't exist. It's patently frivolous, arbitrary, and capricious. American sheiks. Get the hell out of here. All right. Okay. So, we got the Constitution for the Empire Morocco. That's the mother, right? And underneath it, it has its children, right? Or let's say its sister stays towards daughters, right? So, the mother country, the Empire Morocco, let's say it has its daughters, right? Because we're trying to put a human being element to this abstract called a constitution. So, for example, the Constitution of Mordian Morse Premium, Antay Calorado, is what? Female in character. But since it's not the mother, then it can only be what? A daughter or a sister. But it can't be a sister. It has to be a daughter because it comes under the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco. So, all the Moors need an internal constitution that comes under the jurisdiction of our mother constitution in all of the territories throughout the Empire Morocco. Let's continue. All right. So, the Moors know that we've been talking about trying to help the Moor subjects. Who are the Moor subjects? Negroes, Blacks, Colors, African-Americans, Moorish-Americans, Hebrew Israelites, people call themselves Indians, any misnomer that you can think of. They're all Moor subjects according to treaties. And the Europeans all know this. The word Moor subject in itself is what? An adjective. Moorish is an adjective. So, the word subject is a synonym to the word citizen, but there was no word citizen in the Moorish culture. And this is why they called us Moorish because it was a generalized word until the Moor did what? Pledge allegiance to the Empire of Morocco. Other than that, the Moors are just, it was a generalized word for anybody that's copper-colored. But all the Moors recognize each other as Moors. It's just like in the 21st century, we run around and call ourselves what? Black. Back in the day, we called ourselves what? Moor. Or you say we're Moorish. But Moorish is an adjective. So, they would use the word Moorish the same way they use Black today. This is why when you go to Etymaji Dictionary and look up the word Moor, it's affiliated to what? Negroes and Blacks. But the word Negro and Black is generalized wording. It's not a nationality. You must pledge your allegiance to a country in order for the country to then what? Grant you nationality of said country. So, okay. So, the Empire Morocco, as the external sovereign independent state, has a head state called the Sultan. So, we have done what? We have reinstated the Sultan. So, the Sultan signed the Constitution on June 3, 2024, and then on June 8, 2024, the Sultan, through a public inauguration, took his oath to both the Constitution and his office. And subsequently, so did the other three branches of government. The Prime Minister took his oath, public inauguration. The Speaker of the House, the legislative branch, took her oath. And the Chief Judge, the judicial branch, through a public inauguration, took the oath. Three branches of government. Of what? The Empire Morocco, and then you got the Sultan as head of state and Prime Minister as head of government. It's just like, similar to like Great Britain has a Prime Minister. Canada has a Prime Minister. But they all recognize the head of state is who? King George. But that's a monarchy. The Empire Morocco no longer has a monarchy. The office of Sultan is an elected position. It's an office, which has a term limit of seven years. So, the Prime Minister sits in the office, the Sultan sits in the office, the Speaker of the House is in the office, and the Judge is sitting offices. Everybody has a term limit, which means they have to be reinstated when their term is up. Either reinstated or re-elected or re-appointed. So, no more monarchs. Everybody will be held to the standards of the Constitution. All right. So, the Empire Morocco is now helping the Moor subjects to return to Morocco to pledge their allegiance. Who's helping the Moor subjects? Well, it's the WRC Trusteeship Council, who acting as trustees, trustees to assist Moor subjects to be able to pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco. And the WRC, which is a wiser regional council, the WRC will help you to establish an internal constitution over a territory that does not have an internal constitution just yet. But all internal constitutions of the Moors, such as AMPAC's Constitution as an example, comes under the jurisdiction, under, under, under the jurisdiction of the Constitution of the Empire Morocco. So, either we'll help you to establish an internal Moor state constitution, or we'll help, the WRC will help place you in an already existing internal Moor state. But whatever you do, no matter what, when you go through the WRC, you will pledge allegiance to the Empire of Morocco. That must be understood. We're here to help. We don't charge no money. We don't want, we don't want your Federal Reserve notes. We don't want your currency. We don't want your gold and silver coin. We don't want your Cash App or your PayPal. All we want is your time. Because this law belongs to you. Shouldn't charge people for something that already belongs to them. But the Moors are learning that you have an inheritance. And it's time for everybody to inherit what lawfully belongs to all of us. It is not fair for a handful of Moors to run around charging you for packages for something they claiming belongs to you. So, if they selling it to you, that means it don't belong to you. They saying they're the holders of it, and they gonna sell it to you. That means it's not yours if you got to buy it. See, at the WRC, knowledge is free. We don't sell no packages. You won't see a donation tab on none of our websites. We don't charge you at the door, oh, give us $20 admission fee. We don't do none of that. None of that. That's how you know we're telling you the truth. We're not trying to scam you. There's no scheme going on because if you ain't charging no one, that means you're doing it what? Earnestly. It's because we love you genuinely. You're family to us. You don't charge your family for a plate of food. Then why are the Moorish-Americans charging you for a plate of food? It's because they're not your family. It's a Ponzi scheme. It's a pyramid scheme. It's a multi-level marketing scheme if someone's selling you a package. Let's continue. All right. So, we've been talking about the supremacy clause. We're going a little bit deeper today. We're going deeper. Right? I've been building the Moors up. We got to level up as Moors to understand how to enforce our rights. What type of rights? Moroccan rights. And when we understand Moroccan rights, you start understanding that Moroccan law is supreme. So, while you're studying about being Moroccan, you also have to study Moroccan law because Moroccan law is supreme. Therefore, if it's supreme, you know what that means? There's a lot of responsibility on the Moors. If you sitting there holding all this power in your pen, that comes with a lot of responsibility, and you cannot be and you cannot be immature. You can't be reckless, you can't be a Taliban Moor. You have to be the competent authority of the state. Because the pen's been entrusted with you with so much power. So you must study supreme law so you can understand how to do what? De-escalate problems. Not escalate, de-escalate. And this is what supreme law does, it helps you to come in quickly and settle disputes quickly with your power and authority. This is why the Moors have so much power with their pen, not only because we're the natural inhabitants of the land, but also because we were entrusted with the power to maintain peace and security amongst any people that's within the jurisdiction of the Empire of Morocco. So therefore, supreme law comes with a lot of power, it also comes with a lot of responsibility. We have to be responsible people again. Okay, so supremacy clause, uh, going from the top.
Supremacy clause, question. What is the purpose and intent of the supremacy clause or supreme law and procedure? Answer, the supremacy clause or supreme law supersedes, overrules, or preempts inferior laws and inferior procedures.
Alright, so from the top, supremacy clause. Question, what is the purpose and intent of the supremacy clause or supreme law and procedure? What is the purpose of it? Well, the answer is what? The supremacy clause or supreme law supersedes, overrules, or preempts inferior laws and inferior procedures. So you always hear about law and procedure. So Moroccan law supersedes any foreigners' laws and procedures. Their laws and their procedures are not binding on Moroccans, but Moroccan laws and procedures are binding on any foreigners. For example, it's binding on Americans. Because that's what the treaty set for. We're talking about treaty language today, the power of treaties, the power of the pen. Listen. Alright, let's move on. Okay, Moors. Right now, we're talking about, what is the Moors' legal arguments? How can the Moors win? The Moors have been getting their butts kicked. They've been getting their teeth kicked in for decades. Why? Wrong legal arguments. That's why. If your legal arguments are on point, then guess what? You know what the old saying is? If the glove don't fit, you must acquit. So why is the Moors haven't been able to say, if the glove don't fit, you must acquit? Why haven't they been winning? Because the glove fits. What glove? American law is binding against naturalized Moors. That's why. You have to buy by your foster mother and foster father's law while you're still in the jurisdiction of their house. The laws are still binding against you. Because the treaties allowed the United States of America and other European countries to utilize their internal laws against you, whether they're civil and criminal jurisdiction. The Sultans allowed this, the countries got together with a pen and allowed this to happen. We'll learn more today, why that took place, the naturalization of the Moors, we'll learn today. The Moors were disgruntled. Okay, so under your legal arguments, this is what we're learning, we're building up to learn about the legal arguments of the supremacy clause. Right, so I told the Moors, when you're utilizing law, you must have your legal arguments as close to supremacy laws as possible. Supremacy laws are up here. Supreme laws are up here. Anything less than that is doing what? You're getting away from the strength of law. Your legal arguments are watered down the further you get down here. So like I told the Moors, you got Moroccans, Americans as a nationality, then are the races who? Blacks. Who's underneath the blacks? Moorish Americans. Today, no such thing as Moorish Americans as a nationality, because there's no such thing as a Moorish America country. So when you say you renounced your citizenship of the United States, and I'll ask the question again. Tell me the name of the country you pledged your allegiance to. Tell me the name of the country that accepted your application to now be known by the nationality of said country. Can you tell me the name? Now that you say you ain't a citizen of the United States? It doesn't exist, therefore, you're either what? Stateless, or you're still what? A citizen of the United States. But the reality is you're what? Still a citizen of the United States, as an example. And this is why they still have civil and criminal jurisdiction over you, therefore, the glove fits. But when you become Moroccan, guess what? Under Moroccan law, guess what? The glove don't fit. Therefore, you must acquit because American law is not binding on the Moroccans. It has no judicial stand eye. And this is why they never wanted you to know that you're Moroccan, because they can't use their laws and courts against you. Therefore, you have to decolonize. What does decolonize mean? Mean you're getting rid of foreigners' laws and courts, but then you have to replace it with what? Your Moroccan laws and courts of a what? Country, and not your dang own tribe. Tribes and not countries. This is what Moors gotta understand. Temples are not countries. This is what Moors gotta understand. So how can you decolonize when you're not pledging allegiance to a country? How can you fall under the laws of a country when you haven't pledged your allegiance to said country? I'm taking my time here, I'm trying to talk to you a little bit more in this moment. Just trying to have a common sense conversation with you. Listen. Okay, so we're building up, right, so what do I have in the middle? The USA, the United States of America is surrounded by what? Supremacy law, the rule of law. Well, what law rules? Okay, it's Moroccan law and international law. That's what rules. What else rules? Treaties. Remember, I told you. There's treaty law of a treaty because it's a binding contract. And there's what? Legislation of Moroccan law. You must know the distinction between a contract that the United States of America signed in the form of a treaty that's binding on them. And then the Moroccans can create legislation, they can write whatever they want. That's also binding on who? Any foreigners in our jurisdiction of the Empire of Morocco. So what you do is you flank the Americans with both the treaty contract, you flank them, right? You make it binding and forcible against them, as well as use your Moroccan law, which is legislation from the House members. You use both to flank them. They don't have any laws whatsoever to supersede a Moroccan treaty, and they don't have any laws whatsoever to supersede Moroccan law. This is why they don't want you to know that you're Moroccan, because you got the sovereignty and jurisdiction over all Americans. And this is why they fool you through their intel programs. Right, intel pro, intel programs to do what? What is intel pro? It's counterintelligence, correct? So they knew they could not defeat the Moors, so what did they do? They got the Moors to say they're what? Americans. It's masterfully done. I commend the FBI and the CIA for all their infiltration, because they did a hell of a job on our people. They got our people to say they're Americans. And right then and there, the United States was winning. Because you confessed that you're the nationality of someone that's subordinated in the contract. Who's superior in the contract? Moroccans. They got you stuck on amnesia, thinking you're the American. And you know who they hired? People that look just like you and I, to tell us we're Americans. They got people that look like you and I, to tell us we're Indians. All of it's propaganda. It's rhetoric. Downright what? A lie. We're not Negroes, we're not blacks, we're not colored, we're not African Americans, we're not Moorish Americans, we're not Indians. We're Moroccans according to what? Treaties, listen. So when you're enforcing supremacy law, what do I have up here? I have four, one, two, three, four different instruments. What do I have here? The Constitution of Pamarocco, that's Moroccan law. What else do I have up here? Constitution of the United States of America was really the Constitution of the United States Federal Corporation of 1871. Right? So you got the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco and the Constitution of the United States Federal Corporation of 1871. And then you've got the Treaty of the Act of Al-Dosiares, which is a multilateral treaty amongst all the European countries and the Empire of Morocco. And then you got what? The Charter of the United Nations that represents international law. So you got international law, you got treaty law, you got American law, then you got Moroccan law. So today, we're talking about how to enforce Article 123 of the Act of Al-Dosiares, because Article 123 in itself is the most powerful clause of all the treaties when you're trying to enforce Moroccan law. It's the most important article of all the Moors' treaties when it comes to the enforcement of Moroccan law and Moroccan treaties. So there's two articles the Moors should have in their head at all times. What are the two most important articles that Moors should know about? The first article is what? Article 15 of the Madrid Convention of July 3rd, 1880. That's the first article. Article 15 is the portal, is the port for you to come through in order to be Moroccan again. You must come through the portal in order to pledge allegiance. If you don't come through that portal, then the other treaties mean absolutely nothing because you ain't Moroccan. What's the second most important article? Is Article 123 of the Act of Al-Dosiares. We'll talk about that today. Alright, so what's happening? So the United States of America is surrounded by Moroccan law, they're surrounded by American law, because the American Constitution says, Article 6, Clause 2 says what? Treaty supreme law of the land between who? Two, one, two, two countries. So between one, one, two countries, treaty language is supreme. So it's Moroccan law. Moroccan law is supreme over American law. So as soon as the Empire of Morocco fully ratified its own constitution, this constitution immediately was binding on the Americans directly or indirectly. Because it started to do what? Re-convene the government. That way, the government could enforce Moroccan laws against the American government. So when you're utilizing Moroccan law against the Americans, and the Americans themselves have treaties with the Moroccans, and the United States of America's own constitution says Moroccan law is supreme. I'll say it again. The United States of America's Article 6, Clause 2 says it, treaty supreme law of the land. So when you say treaty supreme law of the land, what do they call that? Express and imply general language. But all the judges, the federal judges and the state judges of several union states all know that that language, Article 6, Clause 2, is really talking about Moroccan law. Why do I say that? What was the first country to recognize the United States of America? The Moroccans. What was the first treaty they signed with someone? The Moroccans. As being who? Americans. The Americans were signing treaties with the Moroccans. Now, I know some people say, but the United States was signing treaties with some Indians. Are the Indians the sovereigns over the United States of America? No. The Indians are in a subordinate position, they recognize the United States of America being the external state. And the Indians have accepted their little countries to be internal states of the United States of America. So the United States of America finally signed a treaty with who? Big Mama. Who's the Empire of Morocco. Listen. So today, we're talking about how to enforce our constitution against the United States' constitution, because our constitution's Moroccan law is enforceable against American law. Therefore, Moroccan law supersedes, overrules, and preempts American law. Our constitution supersedes the United States' constitution. The United States, this is their highest law. And our constitution supersedes their constitution. Why? It's the same reason why the Cherokee's constitution is subordinate to the United States. The Cherokees got a constitution, don't they? Yes. And the Cherokees got their own country? Yes. Isn't their constitution subordinate to the United States of America? Yes. Then what makes you think, since the United States of America is in Morocco, then what makes you think Moroccan constitution is not over the United States' constitution? See, the United States' constitution is over the Cherokee's constitution. Now you hearing what I'm saying? I'm talking sovereignty and jurisdiction. They never wanted these copper-colored people to know this truth. See, the United States wants everybody to forget that they are immigrants with an E. What does immigrant with an E mean? Someone who's left their country seeking what? Permanent residency in someone else's country. That's an immigrant with an E. Not immigrant with an I. What does immigrant with an I mean? It means you're just passing through. Let's say you're on vacation, you're over in Cancun, you're an immigrant with an I. You're just passing through, you're on vacation. But if you want to go to live in Cancun, and now you want to take on the nationality of Mexico, you become an ex-patriot of the United States of America, then you become a national of Mexico. Now you just became an immigrant with an E. Because you were seeking permanent residence in another country. Or you got a dual nationality, you got a United States of America's citizenship and you're a Mexican citizen at the same time. So you're still an immigrant seeking permanent residence in another country because you got a right to hold some residency in another country, because you got a passport to say you're a citizen of two different countries. Making sense? Listen, I'm taking my time. It's gonna be a long evening. Okay. So today, we're starting to talk about treaty law. Treaties are so powerful, Moors, listen to me. Treaties will make you, or they will break you as a people. When your country, two countries get together, the leaders of those countries can make or break their people. We'll learn about what happened to the Mexicans in 1848. Okay, last but not least, we got the Charter of the United Nations, but we won't talk about that today because I'm working my way around, going counterclockwise. Moroccan law enforceable against Americans, and then I'll show you how to enforce treaties against And then I'm gonna show you how to enforce treaties against the Americans. And when the treaties don't prevail, then you enforce what? International law because international law is what? Binding on the Americans as well. Now you hit them with what? A three-piece. You hit them with what? Moroccan treaties. You hit them with Moroccan law. And you come with an uppercut with international law. You knock their asses out. Excuse my French. So the United States of America's fighting. They know they're surrounded. They can't avoid it. They violate international law, they'll be found negligent and guilty. If they violate Moroccan treaties, they'll be found negligent and guilty. If they violate Moroccan law, they'll be found negligent and guilty. And then their own American laws and their own Supreme Court will find them negligent and guilty as well because their constitution, Article six clause two, said that the judges had the obligation to enforce the language of treaties because treaty language is what? Supreme. Go look up the case commonly known as Jim C. Jim C. J.I.M.C.Y. Jim C. versus Oklahoma of the year twenty twenty. I think it's August twenty twenty. You'll see in that case, the Supreme Court of the United States told the United States federal government, treaty is supreme law of the land. And as long as you are signatory power to that treaty, that treaty language is binding on you, United States, and is binding on Oklahoma. That's what the Supreme Court told the federal government and the state of Oklahoma. And told them the treaty language is supreme and not your internal Oklahoma municipality law. Your orders mean nothing when it comes to a treaty. Your internal laws of the United States of America mean nothing when it comes to a treaty. Their internal laws of the United States federal government, state and local mean nothing when it comes up against a treaty. A treaty preempts, supersedes and overrules all internal laws of the United States. Listen. Taking my time. They didn't want you to know this. Okay. What do I have up here? This is the General Act of nineteen oh six, right? The General Act of International Conference at Algiers, right? Signed at Algiers on April seventh nineteen oh six. This is commonly known as the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six. This is the mother of all mother treaties. How do I know that? Because this is what they said in Article what? One twenty-three. Let's go to it. Okay, this is, this is Article one twenty-three of the Act of Algiers and you're getting ready to learn that the Act of Algiers is the mother treaty of all Moorish treaties. Alright? Okay, um, Brother Johnson from the top.
Article one twenty-three and last, all treaties, conventions and arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain in force. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail.
Pause, let's read again.
Article one twenty-three and last, all treaties, conventions and arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain in force. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail.
Okay, so let's take it from the top. Interpretation. Alright. Article one twenty-three of the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six reads as follows. And last, all treaties, all conventions and all arrangements of the signatory powers. Who are the signatory powers? The Europeans, right? Just pause right there. Brother Joseph from the top.
Signatory powers or third state parties to the multilateral Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six per intertemporal law. One, the United States of America. Two, France. Three, Great Britain. Four, Germany. Five, Netherlands. Six, Belgium. Seven, all the Russians. Fifteen states. Eight, Austria-Hungary. Nine, Sweden. Ten, Italy. Eleven, Portugal. Twelve, Spain.
Alright, so these are the signatory powers to the treaty review, right? Okay, listen. Okay, so Act of Algiers and those twelve signatory powers of the signatory powers, including the United States of America as an example, agreed in this treaty that all treaties, all conventions and all arrangements of the signatory powers such as the United States of America with who? With who? With Morocco. Morocco's an empire. Does what? Remain in force. So all the previous treaties to this nineteen oh six treaties remain in force. That's number one. Now listen to the second part. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between their provisions. So, let's read again. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between their provisions. What are they talking about right there? Let's pause. What provisions? Provisions of what? Previous treaties such as the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, right? The, the Madrid Convention, et cetera. Any other treaties, previous treaties. If there's a conflict in those previous treaties, then what happens? Watch this. It is understood however, that in case of conflict between the other previous treaties and those of the present general Act of Algiers, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail. So what is stipulation of the latter mean? What does latter mean? Latter means the Act of Algiers. Meaning the newest, right? The newest treaty prevails over all the oldest treaties. So this Act of Algiers prevailed. It says it, it shall, shall. The Act of Algiers shall prevail over what? Over all the other what? All the other treaties, conventions and arrangements. You see that? Therefore Article one twenty-three is what you call a supremacy clause because that one article, Article one twenty-three says this Act of Algiers prevailed over all other treaties. If there's a conflict, meaning if you can't interpret and you can't understand the other treaties, then just stick with this one. The Act of Algiers. Am I making sense? So when you're talking about the word treaty, you have to immediately understand that the word treaty according to Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition. And immediately where treaty is tied to what word? International law. That should tell more something right off the top. That treaties is what? A subject of international law. So Moors been talking about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship for decades, but they did not study international law. It's the Moorish Americans and I'm thankful to the Moorish Americans who turned me on to the Black's Law Dictionary. It's the Moorish Americans who turned me on to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship and I thank them for that. But this is what happens when what's commonly known as truth and falsehood strangely mixed. We've been told some truths and we've been told some falsehoods. So I think the Moorish Americans were the truths that they talked about, but at the same time, you've taught a lot of falsehoods too. So listen. Treaty in the Black's Law Dictionary is automatically tied to the word international law. So that tells you have to study international law and not municipal law. You must understand, you don't study the internal laws of the United States. You study international law if you want to talk about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And if you would have studied international law, you would have found out the only person that can enforce a treaty is the state and its officials. But since you didn't study international law, you didn't know that. But yet, everybody is a Moorish American, has a Black's Law Dictionary and everybody's talking about the treaty, but they haven't looked up the word to tie it to international law. So what governs treaties? International law. International law says in order to enforce a treaty, you have to be a state and the state official enforce the language of a treaty and not the everyday citizen or national. Okay, Brother Dre from the top.
Treaty, international law. A compact made between two or more independent nations with a view to the public welfare.
From the top again.
Treaty, international law. A compact made between two or more independent nations with a view to the public welfare.
Alright, so from the top, treaties about international law. International law between two countries. Says a compact made between two or more independent nations. You see the word independent nation? You know what independent means? You're the external state and not the internal state. Internal states can't sign treaties. Only the external state can sign a treaty with another country. Only countries can sign treaties with other countries. Therefore that means only the officials of the country can enforce the treaty. Listen. So a treaty is about a compact made between two or more independent nations and nations or states. Nation-states. With a view to the public welfare. So the government signed this treaty that looks out for its nationals. Because treaties are based in what? Peace and security between two countries that may have a dispute. So in order these two countries to protect their nationals down here, their government, who represents the state, signs a treaty that maintains peace between these two countries. That way these two countries are not disputing. Because when they're disputing, it affects who? The people down here such as terrorists. Terrorists affects who? Countries and peoples. Listen, we're talking treaties. Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition. Brother Dre.
Treaty, an agreement, league or contract between two or more nations or sovereigns. Formally signed by commissioners properly authorized and solemnly ratified by the several sovereigns or the supreme power of each state.
Again.
Treaty, an agreement, league or contract between two or more nations or sovereigns. Formally signed by commissioners properly authorized and solemnly ratified by the several sovereigns or the supreme power of each state.
Alright, so from the top, interpretation. A treaty is an agreement. Pause right there. A treaty is an agreement. Where do we see that word agreement at? Okay, go back to the Act of Algiers. Article one twenty-three of the Act of Algiers says what? All treaties, all conventions and all what? Arrangements. So arrangements, listen. Arrangements are what? Agreements. You see that? Between who? Two countries. It's generic language when it says agreement. See, they're trying to use every word to let you know as soon as two countries sign any document together, it's a treaty. It's a treaty. Listen. Treaty. An agreement, league or contract. So a treaty is a contract. And I've always told the Moors, there's four elements to a contract, right? What are the four elements to a contract? Number one is what? Parties must be known. Number two is what? Who's superior? Who's inferior in the contract? Number three is what? What are the terms and conditions of the contract? And last but not least is what? How do you enforce the contract? How do you enforce it? Through a court. Which court? Consular court. But that must be mentioned in what? The treaty. So treaties are contracts and the Moors been failing at the four basic elements of the contract because the Moors didn't even understand the name of their own biological mother is the Empire of Morocco. They didn't understand their nationality is Moroccan. They didn't understand nor they forced consul court. Consul court is what? An extension of the country. Because consul court is a neutral court that oversees the jurisprudence and adjudication between two countries. There is no consul court without the country of the Empire of Morocco. This must be understood. So therefore treaty is agreement, league or contract between two or more nations or sovereigns. So nations are sovereign. What's sovereign? The country. Formally signed by commissions properly authorized. So who's authorized? The officials. You must be the proper authorities and solemnly ratified by the several sovereigns. Who's the several sovereigns? The countries are the sovereigns. Or the supreme power of each state. So when you're starting to talk about treaty language, you must understand everything is about what? The state. You see that? So the treaty is about international law and what? The state. You see what they ended it with? State sovereign. State sovereign. What else? Supreme. Supreme state. Supreme power of what? The state. That's what treaties are all about, the state. So Moors kept talking about they enforcing a treaty of peace and friendship, where was the state? Therefore you wasn't enforcing it. Everything you said was a belief because you were not the competent authority, meaning you were not the duly authorized or elected officials of the country called the Empire of Morocco. Listen. You want to go deeper? Be patient with me. Brother Dre.
A quote-unquote treaty is not only a law, but also a contract between two nations and must, if possible, be so construed as to give full force and effect to all its parts.
Again.
A quote-unquote treaty is not only a law, but also a contract between two nations and must, if possible, be so construed as to give full force and effect to all its parts.
So therefore a treaty is a contract and the contract is in full force. It is in full force. And it must be what? If possible, all the effects have to be what? Applied. Therefore the Act of Algiers has one hundred and twenty-three articles that must be applied. The Treaty of the Madrid Convention, it's called the Madrid Convention, has eighteen articles. It must be in full force and applied. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship has twenty-five articles. It must be in full force and applied. But guess who's the only people can enforce those one hundred and sixty-six articles? It's the country and the officials of said country. One hundred and sixty-six articles. And the Moors never did it. Listen, this is very interesting. Listen, watch this. Watch this. Treaty of peace. Oh. Listen to, this is in the Black's Law Dictionary. They want to define what is a treaty of peace. Well, you would think that was kind of self-explanatory, but listen to their definition. Uh, Brother Dre.
Treaty of peace, an agreement or contract made by belligerent powers in which they agree to lay down their arms and by which they stipulate the conditions of peace and regulate the manner in which it is to be restored and supported.
Pause, read again.
Treaty of peace, an agreement or contract made by belligerent powers in which they agree to lay down their arms and by which they stipulate the conditions of peace and regulate the manner in which it is to be restored. and regulate the manner in which it is to be restored and supported.
Alright, so the Treaty of Peace, like the Treaty of Peace and Friendship between the Empire Morocco and United States of America as an example. Why is it called a Treaty of Peace and Friendship? Why is the United States defining it? From the top, it says, "An agreement or contract made by belligerent powers" "in which they agreed to lay down their arms" "and by which they stipulate the conditions of peace and regulate" "the manner in which it is to be restored and supported." So a Treaty of Peace and Friendship, they defined it as being a different type of treaty. So a Treaty of Peace and Friendship between the Empire Morocco and United States of America is about belligerent powers. Well, who was belligerent? So first of all, when you read the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, you'll find out the Moors were taxing the thirteen colonies. So the Sultan had to step in and say, "Look, United States of America, I'll recognize you, but you need to pay taxes directly to me." And I'll make sure these Moors don't continue to stop you during this toll road called the Seven Seas. All the Moorish ports. The Moors was taxing the thirteen colonies. So the Sultan turned around and said, "Look, I'll call the Moors off you, but you better sign this treaty and pay the taxes directly to me, commonly known as what? Tributes. Tariffs. Toll road fees." In order for them to have their ships in the Seven Seas or park them in a Moorish port. Alright, so we're gonna come back to this word Treaty of Peace and Friendship, I'm taking my time. You gotta understand why they're defining these words under treaty. Alright, treaties are contracts, contracts are binding, therefore, under the word called pacta sunt servanda. Pacta sunt servanda is about what? Agreements must be kept. Promises must be kept. Agreements and promises are what? Okay, let's go back to that Act of the Saris, nineteen oh six. Article one twenty-three says what? All treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements must be what? Kept, these are arrangements. Pacta sunt servanda is about arrangements. Must be kept in good faith. Therefore, it becomes supreme law that everybody has to do what? Apply in full force. This United States of America agreed to. Listen, so, you see this word right here, convention? You say, "Well, what, what is that convention?" What, what's a convention? It says, "All treaties, conventions, and arrangements," you see how they're making distinctions of these words? Because they're just trying to group them as what? Synonyms. These are similar words. Because they were signing all types of treaties and in the header it had different titles. I'll give an example. You got the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, right? There's a Treaty of Peace and Friendship that just simply says it's what? A treaty. Right? It expresses that it's a treaty. But if you go to the Madrid Convention, it says what? Right, it says what? Convention. See that? It is the convention. So therefore, they call it the Madrid Convention, because it says what? Convention signed at Madrid, therefore, it's the Madrid Convention. So now you go back to the Act of the Saris, and it says, Article one twenty-three, "All treaties and all conventions." Then it says, "And all arrangements," why is this word arrangement there? See, that's a catch-all word. Catch-all. That the Empire Morocco signs anything with another country, no matter what they put as a title, it is an arrangement, therefore, a treaty or convention, it's an arrangement, however you call it, it's binding on the parties. And the Empire Morocco can enforce it upon the party who signed that agreement. So always remember, the word arrangements is a generic word. Okay? Listen, I'm building up. Be patient with me, I'm building up. Now that we've looked at the definition of treaty, especially Treaty of Peace, I told the Moors in my opening statement, pen is very powerful. Was in the hands of government officials of a country. It will make you or break you as a people. Treaties will help, will help your people, and treaties can hurt your people. That's how powerful these officials have on planet Earth when they're using their power through what? The state. State officials are powerful. Powerful. When they sit in an office and they wield the power of Excalibur. That's how much power they have. Watch this. I'm talking treaties, taking my time, I gotta explain something to the Moors. You can already learn what happened to the Mexicans. But it's the same thing that happened to the Moors on those coming on us, naturalization. I'm gonna show you what happened to the Mexicans. The Mexicans went from being Mexican to American overnight because of what? A pen. Watch this. And we're gonna get back to treaties, I'm talking treaties, I'm trying to give the Moors an example of how powerful treaties are. Watch this. Bang. What do I have up here? It's a Treaty of what? Guadalupe Hidalgo, okay? It's a treaty between the United States of America and what? The United States of Mexico. A treaty between the United States of America and the United States of Mexico, cause Mexico has how many internal states? Approximately thirty-one, approximately. Mexico has approximately thirty-one internal states. Therefore, Mexico in itself is United States of Mexico. And I'm gonna prove to you that the Mexicans were turned into Americans overnight. Okay, from the top, we got a lot of information to go over tonight, we'll be here for a while. Okay, uh, no, from the top.
Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo. Treaty of Peace, Friendship, Limits, and Settlement between the United States of America and the United Mexican States concluded at Guadalupe Hidalgo, February second, eighteen forty-eight. Ratification advised by Senate with amendments, March tenth, eighteen forty-eight. Ratified by President, March sixteenth, eighteen forty-eight. Ratifications exchanged at Cuartaro, May thirtieth of eighteen forty-eight. Proclaimed July fourth of eighteen forty-eight.
Okay, so this is a treaty between who? Listen. First of all, so Treaty of Peace and Friendship, so what does that mean? Now that we understand the definition of Treaty of Peace, it means somebody's what? A belligerent was going on. Right, so the United States of America decided to attack Mexico, cause they wanted all that land, remember? They wanted Texas, Arizona, New Mexico, California, Colorado, they, they wanted all that. Cause they was talking about the gold rush. Right? So they was going westbound, they wanted to take all the land. So they started these frivolous fights. Made it look like Mexicans was attacking Americans, it just wasn't true. However, in eighteen forty-six, the United States of America attacked the Mexicans, and in less than two years, the Mexicans lost and they gave up a large portion of the land of the country commonly called Mexico. The United States of America wrote a Treaty of Peace and Friendship with them, which means there was some belligerence going on. See how we're using the definition? You must understand the proper concept and context before we keep reading. This is why they defined the word Treaty of Peace in the Black's Law Dictionary, tell you, it must have been a war. Something happened where people was acting like a belligerent. Listen. So this took place on February second, eighteen forty-eight, remember that date? February second, eighteen forty-eight when the treaty was signed. Okay, let's go down with the Moors. No.
Treaty of Peace, Friendship, Limits, and Settlement between the United States of America and the Mexican Republic. Article one. There shall be firm and universal peace between the United States of America and the Mexican Republic, and between their respective countries, territories, cities, towns, and people without ex- exception of places or persons.
Pause, read again, Article one.
Article one. There shall be firm and universal peace between the United States of America and the Mexican Republic, and between their respective countries, territories, cities, towns, and people without exception of places or persons.
Pay attention, cause from here, we're gonna jump down to Articles eight and nine. But I'm starting with Article one for a reason. Look how this treaty is affecting everybody. You must have a proper concept and context of what a treaty does to everybody. Everything is movable and immovable. Watch. Article one, "There shall be a firm and universal peace between the United States of America and the Mexican Republic, and between their respective countries." So this treaty is affecting what? Two countries, the treaty is affecting what? Listen. Listen. The treaty is affecting the country, the territories, the treaty is affecting the cities, the treaty is affecting what? The towns, and the treaty is affecting what? The people. You see what a treaty is doing? It's very powerful what a treaty does to every, everybody and everything. And a treaty is what? Without exception, listen. So, "The treaty affects the respective countries, territories, cities, towns, and people without," watch this, "without what?" Exception. Of places or persons. So that, that treaty is signed by the countries up here, and it just triples down to everybody and everything knowingly or unknowingly. And you can already find out what happened to the Mexicans. Unknowingly. Watch. This is how powerful treaties are, this is how powerful countries are, this is how powerful the officials are when they got a pen in their hand, watch this. We're gonna go down to Article eight. And you're gonna find out what happened to the Mexicans, it's the same thing that happened to the Moors. Alright, Nova from the top, Article eight.
Article eight. Mexicans now established in territories previously belonging to Mexico and which remain for the future within the limits of the United States as defined by the present treaty, shall be free to continue where they now reside or to move at any time to the Mexican Republic, retaining the property which they possess in the said territories or disposing thereof, and removing the proceeds wherever they please without their being subjugated on this account to any contribution, tax, or charge, whatever.
Pause, okay, it's proper concept and context. What happened in this treaty? The United States of America and, and Mexico recognized that Mexico was only south of what? The Rio. Right? The river. They call it the southern border. So Mexico is, is separated from the United States of America by what? A river. So they took all that land north of the Rio. And now the United States of America saying Mexico is only south of the Rio. So they're talking territory, they just took all that land from Mexico. And now they're telling the Mexican government about the Mexicans themselves. Watch this next paragraph, pay close attention of what just happened to the Mexicans on February second, eighteen forty-eight. Watch this, Nova, paragraph two.
Those who shall prefer to remain in the said territories may either retain the title and rights of Mexican citizens or acquire those of citizens of the United States.
Pause. Now, what we're reading is, the Mexicans were still north of the Rio, were still in the territory now, the United States of America, not the United States of America under a regime of capitulation and through a treaty relation, have taken over the land, and the Mexicans were still north of the Rio, are now getting caught up in this treaty. The United States of America is putting specific language, express and implied language in this treaty that says, "All these Mexicans that are still north of the Rio are going to be considered Americans." Watch this, from the top again, per- Article eight, paragraph two.
Those who shall prefer to remain in the said territories may either retain the title and rights of Mexican citizens or acquire those of citizens of the United States. But they shall be under the obligation to make their election within one year from the date of the exchange of ratifications of this treaty. And those who shall remain in the said territories after the expiration of that date without having declared their intention to retain the character of Mexicans shall be considered to have elected to become citizens of the United States.
Read again from the top, right here, second paragraph, Article eight, paragraph two.
Those who shall prefer to remain in the said territories may either retain the title and rights of Mexican citizens or acquire those of citizens of the United States. But they shall be under the obligation to make their election within one year from the date of the exchange of ratifications of this treaty. And those who shall remain in the said territories after the expiration of that year without having declared their intention to retain the character of Mexicans shall be considered to have elected to become citizens of the United States.
So what are they saying? At the ratification of this treaty in eighteen forty-eight, all the Mexicans who were Mexican nationals had one year, three hundred and sixty-five days. Because on the three hundred and sixty-sixth day, the Mexicans overnight became what? Americans. This is how powerful treaties are? Two countries agreed that Mexicans would be Americans three hundred and sixty-six days later. If those Mexicans didn't go north of the newfound border. Now let me ask you a question, do you think they had internet back in eighteen forty-eight? Nope. You think all the Mexicans knew about the treaty in eighteen forty-eight? Nope. There was no cable news, there was no twenty-four hour a day cable news to let all the Mexicans know that they either had to go north, excuse me, had to go south, or three hundred and sixty-six days from now, they were gonna be what? Americans. This is the same thing that happened to the Moors. Because this is called what? Naturalization. The Mexicans were naturalized to become Americans through a treaty, and none of them Mexicans pledged allegiance to the United States of America. But they were still referred to as being what? Americans by what? Naturalization through a treaty contract. The contract recognized Mexicans as Americans one year later. Therefore, it ain't got nothing to do with your blood pedigree as to the name of your nationality. It's all about, does that country recognize your nationality? So the United States of America was willing to recognize all their Mexicans as Americans, it had nothing to do with blood pedigree, it's a pen. And the Moors themselves were not aware that the Sultan was signing treaties with the Europeans that allowed the Moors to go from being Moroccans to what? Americans overnight. The Moors are not- The Moors are not Americans. The Moors became Americans because of a what? Treaty. The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, paragraphs one and two. Naturalized the Moors, the same way the Mexicans were naturalized to be Americans. This is too easy. But guess what? Moors American teachers not gonna teach you this. Farrakhan not gonna teach you this. N W A C P is not gonna teach you this. The H B C U's are not going to teach you this. Black History Month is not going to teach you this. They didn't talk about this on Sesame Street or PBS. You must understand that your nationality doesn't always have something to do with blood pedigree. It has everything to do with a contract that countries are signing between themselves to recognize whoever's in their jurisdiction, they're gonna recognize them as a citizen of that jurisdiction. Listen. The Moors need to go back and read this so you can understand what happened to the Moors. You're not Americans, you were adopted as Americans, you're Moroccans, just like these Mexicans became Americans, but they were really Mexicans. But they had to go back and pledge allegiance to Mexico to get their Mexican nationality returned again. Therefore, this paragraph two is saying, you shall return to Mexico and choose between entire submission to the government of Mexico or what? Remain naturalized. Nova from the top again, Article eight, paragraph two, we gotta go over-
Those who shall prefer to remain in the said territories may either retain the title and rights of Mexican citizens, or acquire those of citizens of the United States. But they shall be under the obligation to make their election within one year from the date of the exchange of ratifications of this treaty. And those who shall remain in the said territories after the expiration of that year, without having declared their intention to retain the character of Mexicans, shall be considered to have elected to become citizens of the United States.
Continue.
In the said territories, property of every kind now belonging to Mexicans not established there, shall be inviolable, respected. The present owners, the heirs of these, and all Mexicans who may hereafter acquire said property by contract, shall enjoy with respect to it guarantees equally ample as it- as if the same belonged to citizens of the United States.
So in other words, one year later, the Mexicans' property will become the property of the United States. And they would treat the Mexicans' property because they know all the Mexican, it's, no, you're Americans now. Now this property belongs to, to, excuse me. You're Americans now, this property belongs to the United States of America. And we will treat you equally like we would treat any other American's property. But it's not the property of the country of Mexico, it is your private property, but this private property gonna be governed by the United States of America and treat you like a citizen. You'll come under the jurisdiction of civil criminal jurisdiction of the United States of America as Americans. This is what they're telling these Mexicans in this treaty. Now watch what happens in Article nine. Okay, Article nine, Nova, from the top.
The Mexicans who, in the territories aforesaid, shall not preserve the character of citizens of the Mexican Republic.
Pause. Read it again.
The Mexicans who, in the territories aforesaid, shall not preserve the character of citizens of the Mexican Republic.
Pause. Read it again.
The Mexicans who, in the territories aforesaid, shall not preserve the character of citizens of the Mexican Republic.
Pause, so what's happening already, Article nine? They're saying you can't be Mexican no more a year from now. It's got nothing to do with blood pedigree, has everything to do with this treaty that's gonna recognize Mexicans as citizens of the United States. They will not have the right to call themselves Mexicans. Same thing happened to the Moors, the Moors are not allowed to call themselves Moroccans. They have to call themselves what? Americans. And give up their properties. Listen, from the top.
The Mexicans who, in the territories aforesaid, shall not preserve the character of citizens of the Mexican Republic, conformably by what is stipulated in the preceding article, shall be incorporated into the Union of the United States and be admitted at the proper time to be judged of by the Congress of the United States to the enjoyment of all the rights of citizens of the United States, according to the principles of the Constitution, and in the meantime shall be maintained and protected in the free enjoyment of their liberty and property, and secured in the free exercise of their religion without restriction.
Alright. So, one year later after this was signed, the Mexicans turned into Americans and they were not allowed to hold on to their Mexican nationality anymore. Can you imagine how the Mexicans felt when they found out this in nineteen, excuse me, eighteen forty-nine? Because this was signed in eighteen forty-eight? You know how they felt in eighteen forty-nine when they found out they was Americans all of a sudden? And that the United States military and everybody rolled up on them? And that Mexican like, no, I'm Mexican, they like, no. You're American now. Same thing happened to the Moors in Great Britain. The Moors like, we're Moors, we're Moroccans. And the British government said, no. You're British now, according to the eighteen fifty-six treaty between Empire Morocco and Great Britain, it naturalized the Moors, and they became British subjects overnight. And this was what happened all throughout Empire Morocco. Country leaders were getting together and allowing their people to be naturalized. So the Mexican government allowed Mexicans to be naturalized. Listen. I'm taking my time because I'm trying to show the Moors what happened to the Mexicans is the same thing that happened to the Moors. Okay, let's look up the definition of naturalization, shall we? Nova.
Naturalization, naturalization is the act of adopting a foreigner and clothing him with the privileges of native citizens.
Pause, read again.
Naturalization is the act of adopting a foreigner and clothing him with the privileges of native citizens.
So the Mexicans were adopted under nationalization through a treaty. What type of treaty? A capitulation treaty, regime of capitulation because the treaty was signed because there was a war. Therefore, they signed what type of treaty? Treaty of Peace, because Treaty of Peace mean there was what? Some belligerence going on, a war. So the Mexicans turned into Americans because of a war. And the treaty was signed, the Mexican government allowed the American government to turn Mexicans into Americans with a pen. Okay, let's look at the next definition. Collective naturalization, Nova.
Collective naturalization, this takes place where a government by treaty or session acquires the whole or part of the territory of a foreign nation, and takes to itself the inhabitants thereof, clothing them with the rights of citizenship either by the terms of the treaty or by subsequent legislation.
Pause, read again.
Collective naturalization, this takes place where a government by treaty or session acquires the whole or part of the territory of a foreign nation, and takes to itself the inhabitants thereof, clothing them with the rights and citizenship either by the terms of the treaty or by subsequent legislation.
Pause, so, did the United States take a part of Mexico? And then they turned the Mexicans into Americans? So they clothed them with American citizenship, had nothing to do with blood pedigree. Had everything to do with what? A contract. A contract turned Mexicans into Americans. A contract turned Moroccans into Americans. You have to follow me here. The Moors were naturalized. Because the Sultan of Morocco allowed the United States of America to adopt the Moors under the Convention of Madrid, Article fifteen, paragraphs one and two. It was the obligation of Moors to pledge allegiance back to the Empire Morocco if they wanted to be Moroccans again. Same thing happened with the Mexicans. If they wanted to be Mexican again, they had to do what? Pledge allegiance to the Mexican government again. But, they had to cross back over the Rio, pledge allegiance to be, get their Mexican nationality back. You gotta come back to the host country. That way the government, that they're part of the district. All countries have a district, like the United States called their District of Columbia, Washington D.C. Every country have a main hub, but well, most of the naturalization paperwork gets taken care of. So instead of people having to go all the way back to the district of a country, countries got smart, they did what? They started setting up embassies and consulates all over the place, which was a hub of the district, then a spoke was the embassy or consulate where you could go and pledge your allegiance, or even do what? Renounce your citizenship through a consulate. That way you didn't have to go all the way back to the home base. The Moors had an obligation to pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco. But there was no consulates and embassies for us as Moors to go to. Dread Scott couldn't go to a consulate, he didn't even know he was a Moor, number one. Number two, if he did know, how was he supposed to get all the way back to the District of Fez or Rabat or Tangier of what? The District of the Empire of Morocco, the centralized location of the Empire of Morocco. It was Tangier, Rabat, Fez, et cetera, the district was changing around, but that's where the Moors had to go to pledge their allegiance again. But the Empire of Morocco is vast. We used to have consulates and embassies set up everywhere. It was the Moors' government. We started losing our consulates and embassies. We were dissolving our own country's power because the Moors wasn't governing anymore. Listen, I'm not done. Naturalize, Nova.
Naturalize, to confer citizenship upon an alien, to make a foreigner the same in respect to rights and privileges as if he were a native citizen or subject.
Read it again.
Naturalize, to confer citizenship upon an alien, to make a foreigner the same in respect to rights and privileges as if he were a native citizen or subject.
So when you naturalize someone, you turn around and give them citizenship, it's almost like that person was already born in the territory. The Mexicans were not born in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. They were born in the jurisdiction of Mexico. When the United States of America turned around and made them Americans, they just became simply naturalized, so therefore to confer citizenship upon a Mexican, to make a Mexican the same in respect to the rights and privileges as if the Mexican were a native citizen or subject of the United States of America, as if they were naturally born in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. Now they got the same equal rights as a natural-born American. So naturalized people end up with the same rights as natural-born Americans. So Mexicans who were not natural-born Americans became naturalized, but yet they end up with the same equal rights as someone who was naturally born. You see how the United States is breaking this stuff down? This is very important to the Moors, this is what happened to us. We were not Americans. We were Moroccans. Okay, next definition, naturalized citizen.
Naturalized citizen. One who, being an alien by birth, has received citizenship under the laws of the state or nation.
Read it again.
Naturalized citizen. One who, being an alien by birth, has received citizenship under the laws of the state or nation.
Alright, so, this is what happened to the Moors, the Moors became naturalized on the right of protections in Morocco. The Moors did what? We lost our Moroccan nationality right here, the United States said Moroccan nationality is obsolete and without effect. The United States of America said Moroccan nationality is obsolete and without effect, why? Why they say the Moors' Moroccan nationality could not be enforced? Because Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid or the Madrid Convention said what? That the Moors were what? They're naturalized. You see that? Now it's gonna make sense, let's compare it to what the eighteen forty-eight treaty said, with the Mexicans being naturalized, turning into Americans. Now you're gonna find out what happened to the Moroccans, uh, Roland Dre from the top.
Right of Protection in Morocco, July 3rd, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco, shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization, heretofore, acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country, shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
Alright. So in eighteen eighty, the same thing happened to the Moors. They went from being Moroccans to Americans overnight. It is say, a year from now. Why? Why didn't he give a timeframe for the Moors to become naturalized? It's because it was written in eighteen eighty. Prior to eighteen eighty, what happened? The Moors had already been naturalized since eighteen fifty-six. The Sultan was signing treaties with the Europeans starting in eighteen fifty-six. Great Britain was with the first treaty they signed to naturalize the Moors. The Moors went from being Moroccans to British overnight. Then the Sultan in eighteen sixty-one signed similar treaties like Spain, so the Moors in Spain became Spaniards overnight. The Sultan signed treaties with France and other European countries in eighteen sixty-three, and those Moors and all those countries turned into the nationality of the colonial countries. So fast forwarding to eighteen eighty, the Moors had already been naturalized. So now the Sultan says, you know what, I signed a bunch of bilateral treaties. All y'all need to come and take and sign a multilateral treaty so I can get all of you guys on one single page, one treaty that has this information regarding who? The Moors. So the Moors had an obligation to pledge their allegiance back to the Empire Morocco, but listen. What's the difference between this treaty and the Hidalgo treaty? The Hidalgo treaty said that Mexico was no longer Mexico, it was now the United States of America. Everything south of the Rio was Mexico. And if the United States of America was adopting Mexicans and turning them into Americans because they said that Mexico was in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. Watch this. Do you see the header? The header says, right of protections in Morocco, so the Sultan was allowing the United States of America to adopt the Moors and turn them into Americans. But the Sultan never, ever said that this land was the United States of America. The treaty itself says, these Moors are being what? Naturalized in Morocco. So the United States of America is in Morocco, but the United States of America as- So the United States of America is in Morocco, but the United States of America as a country that's within a country, because the Empire Morocco is a country, the United States of America comes underneath it as a country itself. Therefore, the United States of America is basically a what? A Commonwealth. So listen, so the Sultans allow the Moors to be naturalized, but the Sultans never said that the land was not Morocco. The Sultans made sure that all the Europeans recognized the land was still Morocco. But they allowed the Americans to adopt the Moors, to put them under their jurisdiction. But they also told the Moors, "You shall return." To what? Morocco, but Morocco's an empire. So you're returning where? You're returning to the district to pledge your allegiance. You're returning where? To a consulate or an embassy to make sure you filled out the paperwork to be recognized as Moroccan again. A lot of people read that and say, "Oh, y'all had to go back to the Kingdom of Morocco." That's not true, there was no Kingdom of Morocco in eighteen eighty. There was no Kingdom of Morocco in nineteen oh six at the signing of the Act of the Seres. There was no Kingdom of Morocco at the signing of the Treaty of Fez of nineteen twelve. There was no Kingdom of Morocco during World War One. There was no Kingdom of Morocco during World War Two. There was no Kingdom of Morocco even at the beginning of the Cold War. King Morocco was established in nineteen fifty-six. The Cold War started around nineteen forty-nine. There was no King Morocco, it was always the Empire of Morocco. And all the European countries are in Morocco. And the Sultans allow the European countries to adopt us and call us by the name of the colonial state. Same thing happened to the Mexicans. I'm just trying to prove to you that this is not new on planet Earth, or what happens to people on planet Earth. Treaties end up changing your nationality. Especially in a regime of capitulation, which is under war. You gotta hear what I'm saying. So if a pen changed your nationality to American, guess what? A pen can change your nationality back to Moroccan. Just that simple. Watch this. "I pledge my allegiance to the Empire of Morocco." Boom, you just became Moroccan again. You see how easy that is? That's what a pen can do. Listen. This is the International Court of Justice case of France versus the United States of America. We went over this in class one sixty-seven. I was ending my class by talking about this case. Alright, so we're gonna start talking about it again. We won't finish it up in this class, but we'll continue to talk about this over the next few classes about France versus, let me increase that. France versus the United States of America while being where? In Morocco. Well, wait a minute. So from the top, it says, "Case concerning rights and nationals of the United States of America in Morocco." So the United States of America's in Morocco, but wait. How is it that France can bring a suit against the United States of America? If the United States of America's in Morocco, that means France is also in Morocco. Because they're using Moroccan law to enforce against each other. They're, they're at the ICJ using Moroccan law to say, "Who's breaching Moroccan law of the treaty?" Keep in mind now, they're, they're arguing over Moroccan treaties. How can Americans and French people be sitting there arguing about who breached Moroccan law if one of them is not the representative on behalf of the Moroccan government? I'll say it again. How can French people be enforcing Moroccan law against American people? If French people are not Moroccans? And how can American people enforce Moroccan law against France if the Americans are not Moroccans? So the French people are not Moroccans, and the Americans are not Moroccans, but they're using Moroccan treaties as their legal arguments. So where was the Moroccans? No Moroccans was there in this case. Where was the Sultan? Where was the Moors' government? Since they were trying to enforce Moors' treaties, i.e. Moroccan law. You see, France was the representative, i.e. like a power attorney on behalf of Morocco. Therefore, France could enforce Moroccan laws against who? The Americans. So we're starting to take our steps, re-read this, because I wanna teach the Moors about taxes. I'm gonna show you that the Moors are owed taxes. But we gotta build up to that point, I wanna talk about taxes. But I'm gonna show you, France was trying to collect the taxes against the United States of America, and they were successful, because they were acting like they were what? The Moroccan government. But we gotta build up to that point, we won't get there tonight, but we're gonna keep building up to talk about the taxes. But first, I'm gonna show you how the heck was France having a jurisdiction to bring a case against Americans? Listen. France had signed a treaty called a Protectorate Treaty between France and the Empire of Morocco on March thirtieth, nineteen twelve. Let's read the preamble real quick. Brother Dre.
The government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty desire us of inaugurating a regular regime in Morocco based upon internal order and general security, which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure the economic development of the country, have agreed upon the following.
Article one.
Article one. The government of the French Republic and His Majesty the Sultan have agreed to establish in Morocco a new regime comprising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms, which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory.
So everything France is doing, they have to do it within the Empire Morocco's jurisdiction. Continue.
This regime shall safeguard the religious status, the respect and traditional prestige of the Sultan, the exercise of the Mohammedan religion, and all and of all religious institutions, in particular those of the Habous. It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Moxin. The government of the Republic will come to an understanding with the Spanish government regarding the interests which this government derives from its geographical position and territorial possessions on the Moroccan coast. In like manner, the city of Tangier shall retain its recognized distinctive characteristic, which shall determine its municipal organization.
Alright, so in this treaty off the top, the Sultan is hiring, right? It's the Sultan. The Sultan, right? His Majesty the Sultan is signing a treaty with the French Republic, so the French Republic can help the Empire Morocco to reestablish these particular reforms. So they're supposed to create what? France is supposed to help the Empire Morocco, the Sultan, and the Moors' government, which is the Sharifian Moxin. The Moxin is the Moors' government. The Moxin is the Moors' government. So it says, "It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Moors' government." This is all Article one. Listen, so what was, what was France supposed, supposed to do? It says, "Article one. The government of the French Republic and His Majesty the Sultan have agreed to establish in Morocco..." What about Morocco, the empire? "A new regime comprising of what? One, administrative, that's the government. Two, judicial, that's the judicial branch of what? Constitutional court. Three, education. Four, economics. Five, financial. Six, military reforms." France was responsible for helping the Moors reestablish the Moors' government in nineteen twelve. And to assist the Sultan in creating a country that was more modernized. The Empire Morocco had became what? Antiquated, meaning old school. The world was moving past the customs and usage of how the Moor did things. The world was moving on. The Sultan wanted to keep up, plus the Sultan wanted what? His taxes. He's like, "You Europeans can build them skyscrapers, but I need my taxes." And who did the Sultan need to collect the taxes? He needed the Moors to collect the taxes for the Sultan. The Moors wasn't doing it. So the Sultan turned around and had to, had to hire France to do it for the Sultan. Now, what you're about to read next is the fact that the United States of America turned around and recognized France as being what? The right-hand man of the Sultan. Therefore, the United States of America recognizes France as having what? Sovereignty and jurisdiction even over the United States of America, now that the Sultan has allowed France to have what? The pen. The Sultan has just given France the pen to run the entire Moors' empire. Listen. So after this treaty was signed, watch this. This is the office of the historian, this is very important to the Moors. You gotta find out what happened to the Moors. You gotta pay attention. So, once the Sultan allowed France to help the Moors, and help the Sultan, and help the Empire Morocco's heart to rise up to create a modern country, the United States turned around and recognized the fact that France was the representative of the empire. Okay, from the top, Brother Dre.
The French Ambassador to the Secretary of State. French Embassy, Washington, January nineteenth, nineteen seventeen. Dear Mr. Secretary, I am instructed by my government to express to you its sincere appreciation of the decision of the government of the United States to recognize our protectorate in Morocco. The terms in which you were so good as to notify it to us enhance the value of this token of goodwill. And my government is confident that the traditional and sincere friendship between our two countries alluded to in your letter of the fifteenth will be still increased by this recognition.
Pause, so the United States is recognizing the fact that France is taking over sovereignty and jurisdiction on behalf of the Sultan, which means now the United States of America is recognizing France has jurisdiction over the United States of America. The United States of America is recognizing this. You must have a proper concept and context. Listen, paragraph two.
On one passage of your letter, I am asked to draw your attention, the wording of which being not in exact conformity with facts. It is stated there that the government of the United States, quote-unquote, "recognizes the establishment of the French protectorate over the French zone of the Sharifian Empire." In reality, the protectorate established by France in Morocco with the assent of its ruler covers the whole of that country as evidenced by the terms of the Treaty of March nineteen twelve, a copy which I had the honor of transmitting to you on January third, nineteen thirteen.
Pause. So what's happening here? So France is saying, "Yeah, you wrote a letter back that says you do recognize us as having jurisdiction on behalf of the Sultan, but you put some tricky language in your recognition of the fact that France had jurisdiction." So France says, "Uh..." And your letter you send is, "On what passage of your letter, I am asked to draw your attention to the wording of which being not in exact conformity with facts." See how France is talking to him? You wrote something that's not accurate. Let's point this out to you real quick. It is stated there, there that the government of the United States, quote, "recognizes the establishment of the French protectorate over the French zone of the Sharifian Empire," end quote. France is saying, "We see the trickery." Because the United States wrote what? Let's say it again. Recognized the establishment of the French protectorate over the French zone of the Sharifian Empire. So what happened is, the United States threw in this word, the fact that they recognized that France had jurisdiction over French zone. And France said, "No. We have jurisdiction over the entire Sharifian empire." The empire, meaning all these continents combined, or the empire. The United States is trying to say, "Oh, we recognize that you got some jurisdiction over in France that's a part of the empire." Because what? France is where? Where's France? France is in Morocco. France is in Morocco. France is in Morocco. So the United States is trying to say, "Well, we recognize you got some jurisdiction over that part of the territory of Morocco where France is." And France said, "Ahem, nobody. We got jurisdiction over what? The entire empire." You see what France is pointing out? See, France knows the United States plays games when it comes to words. This is why the Moors have to be wordsmiths. Because the United States will pull one on you, because they know that you don't read, you skim. See, France learned that they had to read when they deal with the United States of America. You can't skim or assume. So France tell them, "No, we got jurisdiction over the entire, what? Sharifian empire." What Sharifian mean? The Sultan's empire. Wherever the Sultan has jurisdiction, now France has it. So France called him out, "Yeah, yeah, nah, we got jurisdiction over that continent too, United States of America." Because the United States of America is where? Listen. The United States of America is where? In Morocco. Right? "Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco." You see that? So the United States of America is in Morocco. And France is in Morocco. You see? I didn't write it. Listen. So France is telling them, "Uh, United States, stop playing games. France has jurisdiction over you now." Because the Moors are not doing their job. So now the Sultan had to hire France to do the job that the Moors were supposed to be doing according to the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh six. Now France signs a treaty with the Sultan in nineteen twelve to let France do the job. But France was supposed to help the Moors to establish a new regime common known as the Sharifian Moxin. The Moxin is the Moors' government. And listen. I gotta take the Moors through this, because how did France have the jurisdiction to bring a suit against the United States of America? That's the question. It's because the Sultan gave France the pen. And the United States of America recognized what? The fact that France had what? The pen. Okay. So France says, "In reality, the protectorate established by France in Morocco with the assent of its ruler." Who's the ruler? The Sultan. So France is telling the United States, "Man, we got our powers from the Sultan." That's how bad the Sultan is. The Sultan can put France in charge of the United States of America. Let me say that again. The Sultan's office is so powerful that he can put another country in charge of another country. in charge of another country. Woo! Now do you understand why they don't want the Moors to know that they're Moroccans? Because the Moors are so powerful. They got jurisdiction over all these countries along with the Sultan. Because the Sultan is so powerful. He can put another country in charge of your country. And that's what France is saying. Listen. In reality, the United States of America, the protector established by France in Morocco with the ascent of the Sultan covers the whole of that country. Listen. France is saying, "The whole of the country." That the Sultan, the ruler oversees the whole country. What's the whole country Empire of Morocco? All these continents that the twelve secretaries power at the very least call their primary residence. So France is reminding them, "France is in Morocco." See what France is saying? Look, we in Morocco too. So are you, United States of America. And now the Sultan is giving us the pen to have jurisdiction over you, United States of America. And we appreciate you recognizing our jurisdiction with this pen, but you're being a little tricky with the language. But what am I pointing out to you? That the Empire of Morocco, the Empire is a whole country. I didn't write it, France wrote it. The Empire is a whole country called what? Continents, calling Empire, listen. Listen, what's the definition of Empire? No, from the top.
Empire, a noun. One, an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority. Formerly, especially an emperor or empress.
Pause, right here.
Supreme political power over several countries when exercised by a single authority.
Pause from the top.
Of Empire. Noun. An extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority. Formerly, especially an emperor or empress. Supreme political power over several countries when exercised by a single authority.
So the, the Sultan had supreme political power over several countries when exercised by a single authority called the Sultan in the Moors government under a country named called what? The Empire of Morocco. So France is reminding them. This, France is saying, "Yeah, it's the Empire." Who's Empire? The Sultan's. Right, because the Sultan is the ruler, which covers the whole of that country. So the country is the Empire and all the countries of the European powers come under what? The Empire, because the Empire is the single authority. And all other countries come under it. I'm being redundant here for a reason. This is powerful stuff, gotta pay attention. What happened to the Moors? We got naturalized. But now I'm showing you how much power you would have if you actually pledged your allegiance. Because if France was so bad with the pen and they wasn't even Moroccans, imagine how bad and powerful you're gonna be and you are the Moroccans. Listen. So, in reality, the United States of America, this is France is saying. In reality, the protector established by France in Morocco with the ascent of its ruler covers the whole of that country, the Empire, as evidenced by the term, the Treaty of March nineteen twelve, the Treaty of Fes. A copy which I had the honor transmitting to you on January third nineteen thirteen. You see? Let's continue. No.
My government would be much obliged to you if you would kindly cause this involuntary error to be amended and the text of your letter of recognition to be so worded as to refer to the French Protectorate as concerning Morocco itself and not simply of the French zone thereof. Believe me?
Believe me. See how France talk to him? France said, "We got the pen, bro." "We got the pen, United States of America." This is France is telling him. "Don't play games with me." The Sultan recognized us as having a jurisdiction over you. So go back and revise that letter and send it back the appropriate way and stop playing games. See how France talk to him? And this is just France, they ain't, they're not even the Moors. That wasn't even the Sultan saying that. This is how France is talking to him. So yes, the United States turned around and recognized the fact that France had jurisdiction over the United States of America through this French Protectorate treaty they signed with the Sultan. Now do you understand why France had the jurisdiction to bring a case against the United States of America? The United States of America recognizes France as being a representative of Morocco. Well, what about Morocco? The Empire. Now, you have to ask yourself, "Well, why did the Sultan trust France with the power nineteen twelve to oversee the entire Moors Empire?" Now, we're gonna spend some time on this next document we're about to read. So be patient with me. You're gonna find out that France has always been working with the Sultans going all the way back to the seventeen hundreds. That the France was always like a, a, a trusted partner of the Sultan. So the Sultans once again trusted France in nineteen twelve, but this time it was a different type of personality sitting in the chairs of France. Because the Sultan recognized France as a government, but you had people sitting in the chairs in nineteen twelve that did not have the same respect for the Empire of Morocco. And that's why France became a belligerent after nineteen twelve. Because they had so much power. France was the most powerful European country on planet Earth after they got that pen. At the same time, France was the most powerful Moroccan official on planet Earth at the same time. They were the most powerful Moor and most powerful European combined. Nobody had more power than France. Listen. Okay. Why did the Sultan trust France? This is the Moroccan flag, right? That was created in what year? What year was the Moroccan flag created? The one with the red flag with the green five-point star? The year nineteen fifteen. Nineteen fifteen. Not ten thousand years ago. Nineteen fifteen. Is when this flag was created, but then when France took over the Protectorate in nineteen twelve, France put their own insignia and put their flag on there to represent in the canton. The canton says, "This is the Protectorate over the Empire of Morocco." From nineteen twelve to nineteen fifty-six. The canton represents France's Protectorate over the Empire of Morocco. You see that? And the United States of America came under the jurisdiction of France. Because France had the pen of the Sultan. And they were acting like the Moors government. Okay, that's an actual flag, that's not made up, that's not AI. That's an actual flag, that's their insignia. Look it up. The Moors don't know nothing about this right here, how involved France was with the Sultan and the Moors. Listen. What do I have up here? Well, this is the United States website, United States Embassy and Consulates in Morocco. History of the United States and Morocco. You can find this on this website, right? United States Embassy and Consulates in Morocco. We're gonna read of what happened in the history. Says history of the United States and Morocco. The United States, Morocco relations, the beginning. The beginning. Well, who was in the beginning? France was there. When Morocco, the United States, which is the thirteen colonies, started to get into diplomatic relations. And you're gonna find out why the Sultans were always trusting France. Listen. So you click on it. You have some Morocco less, you click on it, the beginning, click. All right. So when you open it up, this is what it says. We're gonna read it all. So kick back and listen to the history of what happened between the United States of America's founding, the Moors government, the Sultan, France, Spain, et cetera. We have to know about the United States founding because they try to have amnesia that they have forgotten where they started. They have forgotten who gave them protections. There will be no Americans if it wasn't for the Moroccans. I'll say it again. There will be no American nationality. There will be no country called the United States of America if it wasn't for the Sultan and the Moors and France, et cetera. Just read about this. All right, brother Dre, from the top.
Morocco and the United States have a long history of friendly relations. This North African nation was one of the first states to seek diplomatic relations with America. In seventeen seventy-seven, Sultan Sidi Mohammed bin Abdullah, the most progressive of the Barbary leaders who ruled Morocco from seventeen fifty-seven to seventeen ninety, announced his desire for friendship with the United States. The Sultan's overture was part of a new policy he was implementing as a result of his recognition of the need to establish peaceful relations with the Christian powers and his desire to establish trade as a basic source of revenue. Faced with serious economic and political difficulties, he was searching for a new method of governing which required changes in his economy. Instead of relying on a standing professional army to collect taxes and enforce his authority, he wanted to establish state-controlled maritime trade as a new, more reliable and regular source of income which would free him from dependency on the services of the standing army. The opening of his ports to America and other states was part of that new policy.
Pause, so what are we learning already? The Sultan did not want to depend on the Moors to collect the taxes anymore. See what's happening? Because the Moors were running around rogue, they was creating their own little small little tribes. They wasn't collecting the money and bringing it back to the Sultan. They was playing tribal and separatism games, collecting money without bringing it back to the sovereign. Listen. The Sultan's overture was a part of a new policy he was implementing as a result of his recognition of the need to establish peaceful relations with the Christian powers and his desire to establish trade as a basic source of revenue. Faced with serious economic and political difficulties, he was searching for a new method of governing which required changes in his econ- economy. Instead of relying on a standing professional army. You see that? Instead of what? Instead of relying, instead of relying on a standing professional army, who was this army? The Moors. We're gonna read about it, they're talking about the Moors in here. He couldn't depend on the Moors to collect the taxes like they were supposed to. He couldn't depend on the Moors to bring the money back to the sovereign. So he had to get away from that, he wanted the Americans to pay him directly and don't give the money to the Moors. He couldn't depend on the Moors anymore. This is what's happening in the seventeen hundreds. Okay, listen. Instead of relying on a standing professional army to collect taxes, instead of relying on a standing professional army to collect taxes, so the Moors would be collecting what? Taxes. He can rely on the Moors to collect the taxes? So, instead of relying on a standing professional army to collect taxes and enforce his authority, the Moors are not enforcing the Sultan's authority. He wanted to establish a state-controlled maritime, state-controlled, not tribal-controlled. This is the seventeen hundreds? Sultan's trying to establish a new, uh, new government, a new way of doing things. He couldn't rely on the Moors. He wanted to establish state-controlled maritime trade as a new, more reliable and regular source of income which would be free him from dependency on the services of the standing army. He did not want to depend on the Moors anymore. You see what's happening here? This is the first paragraph. The Moors wasn't governing like they were supposed to. He wanted to create a state-controlled where the Americans just pay him directly. And the Sultan was depending on the Moors government and the Moors military. He realized he couldn't depend on the Moors anymore. So he started signing contracts with who? The Europeans directly. So they would pay him directly. The state would pay another state versus the Europeans giving money to the Moors government that was out there on the patrol. You gotta see what's happening here. Instead of relying on a standing professional army to collect taxes and enforce his authority, he wanted to establish state-controlled maritime trade as a new, more reliable and regular source of income which would free him from dependency on the services of the standing Moors army. The opening of his ports to America and other states was a part of that new policy. See what's happening? Seventeen hundreds. Continue, brother Dre.
The Sultan issued a declaration on December twentieth seventeen seventy-seven announcing that all vessels sailing under the American flag could freely enter Moroccan ports.
Pause, what happened on December twentieth seventeen seventy-seven? That's the date that the Sultan recognized the thirteen colonies. His date of his recognition, December twentieth seventeen seventy-seven. This is why the United States of America celebrates what? Seventeen seventy-seven. Because the Sultan recognized them, allowed them to be what? A country. Because he wanted what? Taxes. It's the only reason why he recognized the thirteen colonies to put him, put them under his protection so they would pay him what? Taxes. It's the only reason why he put them under protection. Allowed them to be Americans. Instead of what? British subjects. Listen, from the top.
The Sultan issued a declaration on December twentieth seventeen seventy-seven announcing that all vessels sailing under the American flag could freely enter Moroccan ports. Excuse me, the Sultan's, uh, stated that orders had been given to his consellers to let the ship, quote unquote, these, uh, dead Americans and those of other European states which, uh, with which Morocco had no treaties, Russia, Malta, Sardinia, Prussia, Naples, Hungary, Langhorne, Genoa, and Germany passed freely into Moroccan ports. There they could, quote unquote, take refreshments and provisions and enjoy the same privileges as other nations that had treaties with Morocco. This action under the diplomatic practice of Morocco at the end of the eighteenth century put the United States on an equal footing with all other nations with which the Sultan had treaties. By issuing this declaration, Morocco became one of the first states to acknowledge publicly the independence of the American Republic. On February twentieth seventeen seventy-eight, the Sultan of Morocco reissued his December twentieth seventeen seventy-seven declaration. American officials, however, only belatedly learned of the Sultan's full intentions. Nearly identical to the first, the February twentieth declaration was again sent to all consuls and merchants in the ports of Tangier, Saleh, and Saleh and Mogadore informing them the Sultan had opened his ports to Americans and nine other European states. Information about the Sultan's desire for friendly relations with the United States first reached Benjamin Franklin, one of the American commissioners in Paris. Sometime in late April or early May seventeen seventy eight, from Etienne de Aubert Calier, a French merchant of Saleh. Appointed by the Sultan to serve as consul for all nations unrepresented in Morocco. Calier wrote on behalf of the Sultan to Franklin from Cadiz on April fourteenth seventeen seventy eight. Offering to negotiate a treaty between Morocco and the United States on the same terms the Sultan had negotiated with other powers. When he did not receive a reply, Calier wrote Franklin a second letter sometime later that year or in early seventeen seventy nine.
Pause. So now the Sultan's hiring France. To be the representative of the Sultan. To go and start working on treaties. With all the European states, watch this. On February twentieth seventeen seventy eight. The Sultan of Morocco, what type of Morocco?
Empire.
The Sultan of the Empire of Morocco reissued his December twentieth seventeen seventy seven declaration recognizing the thirteen colonies. American officials, however, only belatedly learned of the Sultan's full intentions. That he had recognized them. Nearly identical to the first, the February twenty declaration. Was again sent to all consuls and merchants in the ports of Tangier, Saleh and Mogadore. Informing them that the Sultan had opened his ports to Americans and nine other European states. If, so in other words, the Sultan's telling Moors this. You Moors leave these Europeans alone. I'm signing treaties with these states. And not individual Europeans, I'm signing with states, I want the state to pay me taxes. State on state taxes, you see what's happening? Listen, watch this. Information about the Sultan's desire for friendly relations with the United States first reached Benjamin Franklin. One of the American commissioners in Paris. Sometime in late April or early May seventeen seventy eight from Edinie Adabert Kaye, a French merchant of Saleh. Listen. Appointed by the Sultan. Who was appointed by the Sultan, the Sultan appointed who? This gentleman by the name of Edinie de Adabert Kaye, he was a Frenchman. Mister Adabert was a Frenchman, he was appointed by the Sultan to do what? To serve as the consul for all the nations unrepresented in Morocco. So the Sultan hired a Frenchman. To be the speaker on behalf of the Sultan to help put together what? Treaties, listen. Kaye, right, who's Kaye? Mister Adabert, Adabert Kaye, Kaye, Adabert Kaye wrote on behalf of the Sultan. Listen. Adabert Kaye wrote on behalf of the Sultan to Benjamin Franklin. It's seventeen hundreds, France is helping the Sultan. And France is now working with all the Europeans because Sultan's got, France got the pen. Got the, got the, the Sultan's pen to go write treaties, helped them put together treaties, that way the Sultan would sign the treaty. The Sultan trusted France. I'll say it again. Adabert Kaye wrote on behalf of the Sultan to Benjamin Franklin. See this relationship between the Sultan goes all the way back to the seventeen hundreds. This is why the Sultan signed the Treaty of Thessam nineteen twelve and let France run the empire again. I'm building the Moors up, you gotta see what's happening with history. Pay attention, it's very important for the Moors to understand. So Kaye wrote a letter on behalf of Sultan Benjamin Franklin, offering to negotiate a treaty between Morocco and the United States. So the Frenchman was helping. The Americans, the thirteen colonies to write a treaty. That the Sultan would, would potentially accept. So Mister Adabert Kaye was off, offering to negotiate a treaty. Between Morocco and the United States, the French were doing that on the same terms. The Sultan had negotiated with other European powers. When he did not receive a reply, Kaye wrote Franklin a second letter sometime later that year or in early seventeen seventy nine. So now the Sultan has recognized the thirteen colonies on December seventeen seventy seven. The Sultan was expecting what immediately? A treaty, because he wanted what? His money, where's my money thirteen colonies, I just recognized you, where's my money? Oh, I'm gonna send this Frenchman over there and help put this treaty together to solidify the fact, you're under my protection. I'm gonna tell these Moors, don't bother you, but you better pay your taxes directly to me, the Sultan, this is what the Sultan is saying. So here we are in seventeen seventy nine. And the thirteen colonies still haven't signed. The treaty. Even though they've been recognized since seventeen seventy seven. So the Sultan starts to get upset, I'm just letting you know in advance. Sultan don't like to be played with, especially back in them days. They were monarchs, they had to be heady. Listen, brother Dre.
When Franklin wrote to the Committee on Foreign Affairs in May seventeen seventy nine. He reported he had received two letters from a Frenchman who quote-unquote offered to act as our minister with the emperor. And informed the American commissioner that quote-unquote his imperial majesty wondered why we had never sent to thank him for being the first power on this side of the Atlantic. That had acknowledged our independence and opened his ports to us.
Pause, read again.
When Franklin wrote to the Committee on Foreign Affairs in May seventeen seventy nine. He reported he had received two letters from a Frenchman who quote-unquote offered to act as our minister with the emperor. And informed the American commissioner that quote-unquote his imperial majesty wondered why we had never sent to thank him for being the first power on this side of the Atlantic that had acknowledged our independence and opened his ports to us.
See that? Sultan's getting upset. He got this Frenchman writing these letters to the United States and this Frenchman's like, look man, the Sultan's getting upset. He recognized you in seventeen seventy seven, it's seventeen seventy nine and you haven't signed a treaty, which means you haven't started paying your taxes yet. Listen, brother Dre.
Franklin, who did not mention the dates of Kaye's letters or when he had received them. Added that he had ignored these letters because the French advised him that Kaye was reputed to be untrustworthy. Franklin stated that the French king was willing to use his good offices with the Sultan whenever Congress desired a treaty. And concluded quote-unquote, whenever a treaty with the emperor is intended. It, I suppose some of our naval stores will be in acceptable present and the expectation of continued supplies of such stores a powerful motive for entering into and continuing a friendship.
So the King of France is also helping the Sultan, continue.
Since the Sultan received no acknowledgement of his goodwill gestures by the fall of seventeen seventy nine. He made another attempt to contact the new American government. Under instructions from the Moroccan ruler, Kaye wrote a letter to Congress in September seventeen seventy nine. In care of Franklin in Paris to announce his appointment as consul and the Sultan's desire to be at peace with the United States. The Sultan, he reiterated wished to conclude a treaty quote-unquote similar to those which the principal maritime powers have with him. Americans were invited to come, um, excuse me, Americans were invited to quote-unquote come and traffic freely in these ports in like manner as they formerly did under the English flag. Kaye also wrote to John Jay, the American representative at Madrid on April twenty third, on April twenty one seventeen eighty. Asking for help in conveying the Sultan's message to Congress and enclosing a copy of Kaye's commission. From the Sultan to act as consul for all nations that had none in Morocco. As well as a copy of the February twentieth seventeen seventy declaration. Jay received the, that letter with enclosures in May seventeen eighty, but because it was not deemed to be of great importance. He did not forward it and its enclosures to Congress until November thirtieth seventeen eighty.
Right, so. Uh, John Jay received a letter February twentieth seventeen seventy eight. He didn't deliver it to Congress to November seventeen eighty. He didn't deliver it to November thirtieth seventeen eighty. You see, he didn't take it serious.
Listen, before Jay's letter with the enclosures from Kaye's reached Congress. Samuel Huntington, President of Congress, made the first official response to the Moroccan overtures. In a letter of November twenty eighth seventeen eighty to Franklin Huntington. Wrote that Congress had received a letter from Kaye and asked Franklin to reply. Assure him, wrote Huntington, quote-unquote, in the name of Congress and in terms most respectful to the emperor. That we entertain a sincere disposition to cultivate the most perfect friendship with him. And our desire is to enter into a treaty of commerce with him. In that we shall embrace a favorable opportunity to announce our wishes in form.
Alright, so let them know we're getting ready to put together this treaty and sign it, listen.
The US government sent its first official communication to the Sultan of Morocco in December seventeen eighty. It read. We, the Congress of the thirteen United States of North America, have been informed of your majesty's favorable regard in the interest of the people we represent. Which has been communicated by Monsieur Etienne de Aubert Kaye of Saleh. Consul of foreign nations unrepresented in your majesty's states.
Pause, read from the top again.
We, the Congress of the thirteen United States of North America, have been informed of your majesty's favorable regard to the interests of the people we represent. Which has been communicated by Monsieur Etienne de Aubert Kaye of Saleh. Consul of foreign nations unrepresented in your majesty's states.
Pause. So all the states, all foreign. All foreign nations unrepresented in your majesties, in your majesties what? States. So all states belong to the Sultan of Morocco. This is what the United States is writing, keep that in mind, they know that all states. Belong to the Sultan of Morocco because the Sultan was recognizing all the European states. And they all agreed to come under his sovereignty, why? Because all the European states are in Morocco, all European states are in the Moorish Empire. This is why these Moorish buildings are all throughout Europe, they belong to the Moors. So the Sultan was just recognizing the Europeans, they look, you're in my jurisdiction because all this land belongs to the Moors. And whatever belongs to the Moors now belong to the Sultan. And the Sultan wanted to be respected by everyone, by the Moors and by the Europeans. And the Europeans agreed that their states belong to the Sultan. Therefore they belong to the Empire of Morocco. And this is why France is in Morocco. This is why the United States of America is in Morocco. Because all these states belong to Morocco. I have to point that out to you. Okay, from the top, let's go.
We, the Congress. Of the United, of thirteen United States of North America, have been informed of your majesty's favorable regard to the interests of the people we represent. Which has been communicated by Monsieur Etienne de Aubert Kaye of Saleh. Consul of foreign nations unrepresented in your majesty's states. We assure you of our earnest desire to cultivate a sincere and firm peace and friendship with your majesty and to make it lasting to all posterity. Should any of the subjects of our states come within the ports of your majesty's territories. We flatter ourselves, they will receive the benefit of your protection and benevolence. You may assure yourself of every protection and assistance to your subjects from the people of these states. Whenever and wherever they may have it in their power. We pray your majesty may enjoy long life and uninterrupted prosperity.
So they're praying that he has prosperity, why the United States thirteen colonies praying that the Sultan has prosperity? It's because they get ready to agree to pay what? Taxes, see all these contracts about taxes and protections. Okay, listen.
No action was taken either by Congress or the Sultan for over two years. The Americans preoccupied with the war against Great Britain directed their diplomacy as securing arms, money, military support. And recognition from France, Spain and the Netherlands and eventually saw peace with England. Moreover, Sultan Sidi Mohammed and more pressing concerns and focus on his relations with the European powers, especially Spain and Britain over the question of Gibraltar. From seventeen seventy eight to seventeen eighty two. The Moroccan leader also turned to domestic difficulties resulting from drought and, uh, famine. And unpopular food tax, food shortages and inflation of food prices, trade problems and a disgruntled milit- military.
Pause. So. Once again, listen, listen what, what's happening. Listen to what's happening. Right here, moreover. Sultan Sidi Mohammed. And more pressing concerns and focus on his relationship with the European powers, see, he's creating state-on-state relations. Especially Spain and Britain over the question of Gibraltar. From seventeen seventy eight to seventeen eighty two, the Moroccan leader, the Sultan, also turned to domestic difficulties, domestic. He about to talk about the Moors now. He's turned to domestic difficulties resulting from drought and famine. And unpopular food tax. Food shortages and inflation of food prices. Trade problems, listen, and disgruntled military. Disgruntled military, so his domestic affairs dealing with the Moors, the Moors were disgruntled. Because the Sultan wasn't probably paying the Moors as the military, the Moors needed some money. That's probably another reason why they wasn't respecting the Sultan, because they wasn't getting paid, so they just turned it to what? Road, that's why they call them barbarians. This is robbing everybody, carjacking. So the Sultan's trying to reign in the order of both the Moors. And the Europeans, you know how difficult that is, he's trying to govern over continents. And he couldn't depend on the disgruntled Moors anymore. So he started depending on the Europeans to pay him directly with the taxes, you gotta see what's happening here. This is why the Moors ended up being naturalized. In the eighteen hundreds. Yeah, remember now it's happening towards getting close to eighteen hundred, this is happening around the seventeen seventy eight, seventeen eighty two, you see these dates? This is getting close to what? The eighteen hundreds. The Sultan started allowing the Europeans to naturalize the Moors starting eighteen fifty six. Because the Europeans were willing to pay him what? Taxes directly from state to state. The Sultan couldn't collect the taxes because the Moors wasn't doing the job. They were disgruntled for whatever reason. Gotta see why the Moors ended up naturalizing, I'm building up. We gotta learn from these Moors. We gotta run our country, we gotta be countrymen. We gotta run the Moors. We gotta run the Moors government and do our damn job to our country, have patriotism to our country. Love our country, love our leaders. Collect the taxes, maintain the responsibility of enforcing Moroccan law. We have to be responsible leaders this time around. The Sultan's gave up on us. Listen.
The American commissioners in Paris, John Adams, Jay, and Franklin urged Congress in September seventeen eighty three. To take some action in negotiating a treaty with Morocco. Quote unquote, the Emperor of Morocco has manifested a very friendly disposition towards us, they wrote. Quote unquote, he expects and is re- uh, reading to receive a minister from us. And as he may be succeeded by a prince differently disposed, a treaty with him may be of importance. Our trade to the Mediterranean will not be inconsiderable. And the friendship of Morocco, Algiers, Tunis, and Tripoli may become very interesting in case the Russians. Should succeed in their endeavors to navigate freely into it by Constantinople.
Mm-hmm, see, the the word Russian popped up, this goes way back. Listen.
Congress finally acted in the spring of seventeen eighty four. On May seventh, Congress authorized its ministers in Paris, Franklin, Jay, and Adams. To conclude treaties of amity and commerce with Russia, Austria, Prussia, Denmark, Saxo- uh, Saxony. Hamburg, Great Britain, Spain, Portugal, Genoa, Tuscany, Rome, Naples, Venice, Sardinia. And the Ottoman port as well as the Barbary states of Morocco, Algiers, Tunis, and Tripoli. The treaties and the Barbary states were to be enforced for ten years or longer. The commissioners were instructed to inform the Sultan of Morocco of the quote unquote great satisfaction. Which Congress feels from the amicable disposition he has shown towards these states. They were asked to state that the quote unquote, the occupations of the war and distance of our situation. Had prevented our meeting his friendship so early as we wished. A few days later, commissions were given to the three men to negotiate the treaties.
Alright, so the Sultan, now that he's recognized the thirteen colonies. On December twentieth seventeen seventy seven. That's what allowed the thirteen colonies, now they've been recognized by the Sultan, they could go out and sign treaties. With other countries, because the Sultan allowed the thirteen colonies to act like what, a country? By the power of his pen and recognition, it allowed the United States of America to get into treaty relations with other countries. You see how powerful the Sultan is? Now the United States is running out and signing all kind of treaties. Only because of the Sultan, so now the Sultan, he's still upset because he's like, wait, you, you're signing all these treaties? You still haven't signed my treaty? Now let's get the proper concept and context. Why is the United States taking so long? From seventeen seventy seven? To get this treaty drafted and signed? Cause A, they knew they were gonna owe taxes, and B, wasn't they trying to get rid of a monarch? King George, they didn't want no monarch, and they didn't want to pay taxes to Great Britain. Now here comes the Sultan saying, well, if you wanna be a country in my land. I'll recognize you as a country, but you're gonna pay me taxes and you're gonna come under me as a monarch, so. Pick your poison. Remain British. Knowing if you remain being British, you know Great Britain's looking for you. There's a warrant out on all y'all heads under capital punishment, because Great Britain said you're treasonous British subjects. So sign the treaty and be Americans and I'll protect you, and you pay your taxes, or you can go back to Great Britain and be beheaded. So they was dragging their feet on signing the treaty because they didn't want to recognize another monarchy. They did not want to pay taxes to another monarchy. But they had no choice, if they wanted to be what, Americans instead of British? See, they were changing their nationality, and who allowed them to do it, the Sultan, listen.
Continued delays by American officials exasperated the Sultan and prompted him to take more drastic action to gain their attention. On October eleventh seventeen eighty four, Morocco has captured the American merchant ship Bet- uh, Betsy. After the ship and crew were taken to Tangier, and he announced that he would release the man, ship, and cargo. Once a treaty with the United States was concluded. Accordingly, preparation for negotiations with Morocco began in seventeen eighty five. On March one, Congress authorized the commissioners to delegate to some suitable agent. The authority to negotiate treaties with the Barbary states. The agent was required to follow the commissioner's instructions and to submit the negotiated treaty to them for approval. Congress also empowered the commissioner to spend a maximum of eighty thousand dollars to conclude treaties with these states. Franklin left Paris on July twelfth seventeen eighty five to return to the United States, three days after the Sultan released the Betsy and his crew. Thomas Jefferson became Minister to France, and thereafter negotiations were concluded by Adams in London and Jefferson in Paris. On October, on October eleventh seventeen eighty five, the commissioners appointed Thomas Barclay. American consul in Paris to negotiate a treaty with Morocco on the basis of a draft treaty drawn up. By the commissioners. That same day, the commissioners appointed Thomas Lamb as special agent to negotiate a treaty with Algiers. Barclay was given a maximum of twenty thousand dollars for the treaty. And instructed to gather information concerning the commerce, ports, naval, and land forces. Languages, religion, and government, as well as evidence of Europeans attempting to obstruct American negotiations with the Barbary states. Barclay left Paris on January fifteen seventeen eighty six. And after several stops, including, I'm sorry, two and a half months in Madrid, arrived in Marrakech on June nineteenth. While the French offered some moral support to the United States in their negotiations with Morocco. It was the Spanish government that had furnished substantial backing in the form of letters from the Spanish king. And prime minister to the Sultan of Morocco. After cordial welcome, Barclay con- clu- um, conducted the treaty negotiations in two audiences with Sidi Mohammed. And Tahir Far- um. Is that Fennish, Finnish, a leading Moroccan diplomat from a Marisco family in Saleh. Who headed the nego- negotiations.
Pause. After cordial. So. Listen, after cordial. Listen, you ready to talk about it more, you ready to talk about it more, after cordial. Welcome, Barclay conducted the treaty negotiations in two audiences. With Sidi Mohammed and Tahir. Finnish, a leading Moroccan diplomat from a Marisco family, who the Mariscos? The Moors. The Mariscos. You see, so the Moors were the diplomats. Marisco family in Said, who headed the negotiations. Listen, they gonna talk about Moors again, don't worry about it, they gonna talk about Moors again, listen.
The earlier proposals. Yeah, the earlier proposals drawn up by the American commissioners in Paris became the basis for the treaty. While the Emperor opposed several articles, the final form contained in such as all that the Americans requested. When asked about tri- uh, when asked about tribute. Barclay stated that he quote unquote had to offer to his Majesty the friendship of the United States. And to receive his in return to form a treaty with him on liberal and equal terms. But if any engagements for future presence or tributes were necessary, I must return without any treaty. The Moroccan leader accepted Barclay's declaration that the United States would offer friendship, but no tribute for the. Well, excuse me, but offer friendship, but no tribute for the treaty. And the question of presence or tribute were not raised again. Barclay accepted no favor except the ruler's promise to send letters to, uh, Constantinople. Tunisia, Tripoli, and Algiers recommending they conclude treaties with the United States.
So. The Sultan, so the United States negotiated with the Sultan said, do we have to pay you some money right now? By signing this treaty, see, even when you sign treaties. You have to pay tribute to those rulers. You know how you sign a lease at the apartment, they want some what, security deposit? Yeah, the Sultan said, yeah, what's a security deposit? And and America said, look, man, we ain't got no more money, man, we we spent, we ain't gave it to the European countries, we didn't. Gave it to the other Barbaries, can you please sign this treaty? We'll pay our taxes, but we, we don't have no money for no security deposit. Listen. So it says Barclay accepted no favor except the ruler's promise. To send letters to Constantinople, Tunisia, and Tripoli, and Algiers. Recommending they conclude treaties with the United States, so the Sultan had to send letters. To the other quote unquote Barbary states, which is the Moorish Empire. To sign treaties with the United States of America, the Sultan did that, you see how powerful the Sultan is? He's controlling the narrative of all European states. He's controlling the narrative of the United States thirteen colonies. He even controlling the narrative of all the other neighboring territories before the United States even signed treaties. The Sultan had to give the permission. You see why they don't want to talk about the Sultan no more? You see why the Moor Science Temple doesn't talk about the Sultan? Cause the Moor Science Temple wants their sheiks to be the ruler. They've undermined the treaties, because the Sultan's got the real sovereign power and not no American sheiks. Okay, good brothers, take it up, uh, start right here.
Uh, the Moroccan leader accepted Barclay's declaration. That the United States would offer friendship, but no tribute for the treaty. And the question of presence or tribute were not, was not raised again. Barclay accepted no favor except the ruler's promise to send letters to Constantinople to, uh, Constantinople, Tunisia, Tripoli. And Algiers recommending they conclude treaties with the United States.
Mm-hmm, Sultan's giving permission. To everybody else to sign treaties with the thirteen colonies, how powerful the Sultan is, continue.
Barclay and the Moroccans quickly reached agreement on the Treaty of Friendship and Amity, also called the Treaty of Marrakech. It was sealed by the Emperor on June twenty three and delivered to Barclay to sign on June twenty eight. In addition, a separate ship seals agreement, providing for the identification. At sea of American and Moroccan vessels was signed at Marrakech on July sixth seventeen eighty six. Binding for fifty years, the treaty was signed by Thomas Jefferson at Paris on January one seventeen eighty seven. And John Adams at London on January twenty five seventeen eighty seven, and was ratified by Congress on July eighteen seventeen eighty seven. The negotiation of this treaty marked the beginning of diplomatic relations between the two countries, and it was the first treaty. Between any Arab, Muslim, or African state and the United States. Congress found the treaty with Morocco highly satisfactory and passed a note of thanks. To Barclay and to Spain for helping the negotiations. Barclay had reported fully on the amicable negotiations. And written that the King of Morocco had quote unquote acted in a manner most gracious and condescending. And I really believe the Americans possessed as much of his respect. In regard as does any Christian nation whatsoever. Barclay portrayed the king as quote unquote a just man according to this ideology, idea of justice. Of great personal courage, liberal to a degree, a lover of his people. Stern and rigid in disturbing, um, and distributing justice. Sultan sent a friendly letter to the President of Congress with the treaty and included another from the Moorish minister. Sidi Fennish, uh, Sidi Fennish, which was highly complimentary of Barclay.
Oh, so. We'll read it from the top, but look what they just talked about. The Moorish minister. So at the time, the Sultan is using the Moorish government still to negotiate these treaties. And working with Moorish diplomats, France was involved, Spain was involved. Everybody's involved with these treaties, but the Sultan's running the whole show, he is the ring leader. Nothing moves without the Sultan. See what's happening? So it's all about the Moors as well, the Moors is up in there, remember now, he's talking about this disgruntled military. So now he's finally talking about these Moors and Mariscos, you see? So don't let the United States fool you that they don't know nothing about Moors. They humble beginning as an infancy nation of Americans started with working with Moors and the Sultan. Don't let them fool you, this is why they don't want you to know you're a Moor, because you have jurisdiction over them. Because they are immigrants. With an E, what's an immigrant with an E, just a moment. What's an immigrant with an E? Okay, you know what, from the top.
Immigrant, a noun. One, a person who leaves their own country in order to settle permanently in another.
Pause, read again.
Immigrant, a noun, a person who leaves their own country in order to settle permanently in another.
So the British subjects. Were seeking asylum. To come under the jurisdiction. Of the Moroccan Sultan and the Moroccan Moors, but keep in mind. More rockers, so the Moors, they came, the Moors and the Sultan, they were all Moroccans. So these people that call themselves Americans today. Were British subjects. And now they became immigrants with an E. Because what is a person who leaves their own country, so they left Great Britain. In order to settle permanently in another countries, what, jurisdiction? So if the British subjects are not Americans, because they got recognized to be Americans by the Sultan. But to this very day, they are still what? Immigrants with an E in our homeland. Don't let them fool you. They don't want to talk about this history, they got amnesia all of a sudden. They're immigrants with an E. But they want to pick on people that's immigrants with an I. But same time, there's a lot of immigrants with an I are seeking to become immigrants with an E. In this north continent. Because the Americans have forgotten that they themselves are immigrants. With an E. And this is why they don't want the Moors to know they're Moors, because the Europeans, i.e. the Americans. I.e. these people that call themselves white, don't want nobody to remember that they're immigrants with an E. Because that would make them what, subordinate in this landmass. Cause now we're talking sovereignty and jurisdiction. And they know the Sultan and the Moors government have sovereignty and jurisdiction, because all states belong. To the Empire of Morocco and its Majesty, the Sultan, listen, as we start to close out, listen.
The United States established a consulate in Morocco in seventeen ninety seven. President Washington had requested funds for this post in a message to Congress on March, on March two seventeen ninety five. And James Simpson, the US consul at Gibraltar, who was appointed to this post, took up residence in Tangier two years later. Sultan Sidi Mohammed's successor Sultan Moulay, um, Soumen. Had recommended to Simpson the establishment of a consulate, because he believed it would provide greater protection for American vessels. In eighteen twenty one, the Moroccan leader gave the United States one of the most beautiful buildings in Tangier for his consulate representative. This building served as the seat of the principal US representative to Morocco until nineteen fifty six. And is the oldest piece of property owned by the United States abroad. US Moroccan relations from seventeen seventy seven to seventeen eighty seven reflected the international and economic concerns. Of these two states in the late eighteenth century. The American, the American leaders and the Sultan signed a seventeen eighty six treaty, largely for economic reasons. But also realized that a peaceful relationship would aid them in their relations with other powers. The persistent friendliness of Sultan Sidi Mohammed to the young republic. In spite of the fact that his overtures were initially ignored. Was the most important factor in the establishment of this relationship.
Alright, so. This was a quick snapshot of the humble beginnings. Of the thirteen colonies who have now become what, fifty plus colonies? of the thirteen colonies who have now become what? Fifty plus colonies. There will be no Americans. Certainly wouldn't be an American nationality or a country called the United States of America if it wasn't for the Sultan recognizing them and allowing them to go out and sign treaties with other countries because those other countries turn around and also recognize the United States of America. So the United States of America owes a huge debt. Tremendous debt and they owe a lot of respects to the Sultan and the Moors, because I showed you here talking about the Moors diplomats as well. The United States of America owes a huge debt to France and Spain, et cetera, for helping the thirteen colonies to establish themselves. Yeah, I remember during that time, a lot of Europeans was coming together because they wanted to fight Great Britain. Great Britain was trying to control the seas, they had the biggest military naval fleet. Europeans came together to defeat Great Britain. This is why the thirteen colonies, they talk about the American Revolution, but they won't tell you that it was the Moors, Spain, France, Haiti and the Netherlands, et cetera, helping the thirteen little col- colonies, the small little thirteen colonies went up against a great country called Great Britain. But they'll tell a story like they did it all by themselves, that's a lie. They got the help of the Moors, the French, the Spaniards, the Haitians, Netherlands, et cetera. It's the only way you could beat Great Britain back then. But the, but the Moors at the same time. Every time they saw the thirteen colonies, they was like, come over here and pay this toll roll fee. The Sultan said, no, I want states to pay me, state to state. No more of this collecting peasant money out there in the seven seas, I don't want to do that no more. And this is why the United States, under Article Six of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, it clearly states that the Americans came under the jurisdiction, the protections of the Sultan. So I said all that to say what? Alright. I said all that to say what? So when, going backwards, when the United States recognized France France in nineteen seventeen, see that? Nineteen seventeen is working with the Sultan in nineteen seventeen. It was going all the way back to the seventeen hundreds because France was working with the Sultan even back then. So the United States of America, the Empire Morocco and France are all intertwined. You see? And this, I'm working it backwards, this is why the Sultan has signed this treaty in fez right in March nineteen twelve. I'm working it backwards. Right? Now watch this, as I start to close out. Now do you understand how at the International Court of Justice, how France had the jurisdiction at the International Court of Justice to bring a suit against the United States of America because we'll start going over this case. I'm building up, we'll go over the case in the next classes to come, because we want to start talking about taxes. But I have to show the Moors how is that France had the jurisdiction to bring a suit against the United States of America in the International Court of Justice in the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. It's because France is in Morocco, United States is in Morocco and the Sultan allowed France to be the power attorney to hold the pen to represent the empire. Because the reality is, this should have said what? The Empire Morocco versus the United States of America. But since France was holding the pen on behalf of the Sultan, it said France versus United States of America. So therefore, the United States of America got their butt kicked in this case in nineteen fifty-two. So what do you think is going to happen in the twenty-first century when it says Empire Morocco versus United States of America in the year twenty twenty-six? Because the United States of America lost in nineteen fifty-two, you think the ICJ judges are going to overturn their own case law after they already told the United States what's up in nineteen fifty-two? No, they're not going to overturn their own ruling, they're going to say, United States of America? Y'all, y'all back again over these same legal arguments? What did we tell you last time? Guess what? We're going to tell you that again, and guess who's standing there this time? The Moors instead of France. The competent authority of the Empire Morocco and the Sultan, it'd be the Sultan. The Moors government as Moroccan nationals versus the United States of America. And guess what? The United States of America's already lost in advance because they already lost to France in nineteen fifty-two and France wasn't even Moors. So we'll go over this more in the next few classes, just wanted to show you why did France have so much power? How could they bring a suit in a world court? So we'll keep talking about this because I need the Moors to understand, we're going to start talking about taxes? Plus I need the Moors to see how naturalization works, it ain't got nothing to do with blood pedigree that Mexicans turned into Americans. You think they have something to do with blood pedigree of being American? No. And I hate to say this, because I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but the nationality of America is kind of sort of like being a mutt. It's a melting pot of a bunch of nationals on planet Earth. That's no disrespect, I'm just trying to say it's a melting pot of nationals. Who have now accepted a nationality called American, which means nationality don't have nothing to do with blood pedigree. It has something to do with a country recognizing you as one of their own. Therefore, the Moors have to come back and pledge their allegiance to their own biological mother, which is the Empire Morocco. I am with that. Islam.